In the staff report, this zoning text amendment is being initiated by the planning commission recommended by staff due to need to allow for increased flexibility for side yard setbacks for commercial and industrial projects. As noted in the report, the city has historically applied what in effect is a residential setback requirement of five feet or one half the wall height, which to a large degree does currently make sense for residential properties. It allows for a stepping of building massing as a building gets taller. But in a commercial and industrial setting, that type of requirement can be increasingly restrictive, particularly with narrow lots. So the amendment before you would provide some flexibility separately for the C2 and the M1 zoning district. So with regard to the C2 zoning district, the existing standard of five feet or one half the wall height would remain for any property line that abuts a residentially zoned property. But where a property line abuts a non-residentially zoned property, the planning commission would have the ability to allow a reduction in setback to five feet flat irrespective of wall height, where it finds that the reduced setback would enhance the architectural integrity of the building. The intent of this is provide broad discretion to the planning commission and tie reduction to this development standard to increase expectation in building design. As pertains to the M1 zoning district, the standard would also remain the same, five feet or one half the wall height, where a side property line abuts a residentially zoned property. But where a side property line abuts a non-residentially zoned property, a setback would be taken down to five feet flat. That would be the new baseline in that scenario. And then the planning commission would be granted the ability to allow further reduction to effectively zero feet, to allow the building to be placed on a property line when it makes two findings. The first, that the overall building height, the building wall height inclusive of a parapet, is no taller than 30 feet and limited to one story. And that the proposed building is designed and would be restricted to general industrial use such as manufacturing, processing, storage, and assembly fabrication. The intent of this is to allow for a relatively narrow exception for standard tilt-up industrial buildings that may be found in the M1 zoning district. And as discussed in your staff report, staff does believe that the amendment is consistent with the findings in order for the planning commission and city council to take action on this type of text change, specifically that the amendment is consistent with the goals, policies, and actions of the general plan. There is plenty of policy strategy guidance with regard to encouraging a development of the industrial and commercial zones, and also at the same time respecting adjacencies with residential properties. In that regard, I conclude my presentation. We'll take any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Daniel?
Just for my edification, first of all, I'm guessing that the zero setback for manufacturing is common in municipalities? That's a fairly common?
It is, and it is actually reflected in some properties out there that predate current standards. For instance, I'm in Glensey and Christage.
So if you have zero setback on the side, that means basically if you had two properties, they both had zero setback, they'd be abutting each other?
Exactly.
Okay. Is there any downside to this zero setback?
The downside is the aesthetic concern. So when a property, when a building is built up at the property line, you basically have just a solid wall. So no windows, no penetrations, which is sometimes appropriate in industrial settings depending on the exact location and what's happening next to it. But that generally is the largest downside, which is why the text change is limited to a building that is actually lower than the maximum height that would otherwise be allowed. In the M1 zoning district, a building could be up to 45 feet. But this allowance would be restricted to buildings no greater than 30 feet and at a definition of height that's a little more restrictive. Typically, the height is measured to the roof, not necessarily the parapet that goes above and around the building. So this would be inclusive of the parapet, so try to restrain some of that building massing so you don't necessarily have a massive 50-foot-tall CMU wall.
Okay. And then on the C2, so C2, general commercial, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is like covers mostly the commercial outside of the downtown area?
Outside the downtown, we have two commercial districts. We have the C2 general commercial and then the C1 neighborhood commercial. The C2 largely covers Bascom and Hamilton avenues and areas have priority to that as well.
Okay. And so in your chart here, you talk about when it gives the planning commission the option to reduce the setback when it finds that the reduced setback would enhance the architectural integrity of the building? Could you explain that a little bit to me?
Well, it's going to be a case-by-case determination. We're basically saying that an architect or a property owner needs to make a demonstration that the reduced setback will result in a better project. And if it doesn't, then the city does not need to grant that reduction of the development standard.
Can you give an example of where that might be the case?
I think, again, it really is going to be a case-by-case determination on a specific project, and it likely would result in some, well, not likely, potentially result in some iterative discussion at a commission meeting or may be presented. The commission may feel that there still needs to be some improvement, and you would give specific guidance at that meeting for that specific project. But we intentionally didn't want to make this too specific so that it would not lose its utility.
That's all I have. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Is this significantly different than the proposal that was brought for the planning commission last December?
It is a little different, yes. Specifically with the, I believe, the M1 is a little more permissive in as much as that it does create a new five-foot setback where property line does not abut a residentially zoned property. That is something distinct from the December meeting.
Thank you.
So in answer to question, to commission advisor, you said it results in a better project. And usually in a discussion, there's two sides. Better project for which side? For the applicant or for?
Well, from the planning commission's perspective.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, I'll open it up for the public. Would anybody like to speak on this particular item? I've got no speaker cards. Anybody on Zoom, Madam Clark?
Would anyone in the online public like to speak? Please raise your hand.
I have one person.
Please, if you'd like to go ahead.
Mr. Raha, you can go ahead and speak.
Can you folks hear me?
You're a bit faint, Raha.
Okay, so a quick thing on the M1 of no setback things. Most of the properties in the Dell Avenue are like that, and we recently had like a huge fire in the Dell Avenue. When you have M1, there is going to be like, could be manufacturing or something. So isn't it a fire hazard to not have any setback? Like the fire trucks and all should be able to access all sites of the property? That was my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
gives the planning commission the option to reduce the setback when when it finds that the reduced setback would enhance the architectural integrity of the building. Could you explain that a little bit to me?
Well, it's going to be a case by case determination. We're basically saying that an architect or a property owner needs to make a demonstration that the reduced setback will result in a better project. And if it doesn't, then the city does not need to grant that reduction of the development standard.
Can you give an example of where that might be the case?
I think again, it really going to be a case by case determination on a specific project. And it likely would result in some, well, not likely, potentially result in some iterative discussion at a commission meeting or may be presented. The commission may feel that there still needs to be some improvement and you would give specific guidance at that meeting for that specific project. But we intentionally didn't want to make this too specific so that it would not use, lose its utility.
That's all I have. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Is this significantly different than the proposal that was brought for the planning commission last December?
It is a little different, yes. Specifically with the leave the M one is a little more permissive in as much as that it does create a new five foot setback where property line does not abut a residentially zoned property. That is something distinct from the December meeting.
Thank you.
So in answer to question, to commissioner, as I said, you said it results in a better project than usually in a discussion, there's two sides, better project for which side, for the applicant or for?
Well, from the, from the planning commission's perspective.
Okay. Any, any more questions? Okay, I'll open it up for the public. Would anybody like to speak on this particular item? Got no speaker cards. Anybody on Zoom, Madam Clark?
Would anyone in the online public like to speak? Please raise your hand.
I have one person.
Please, if you'd like to go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Raha, you can go ahead and speak.
Can you folks hear me?
You're a bit faint, Raha.
Okay, so a quick thing on the M one of no setback things. Most of the properties in the Dell Avenue are like that. And we recently had like a huge fire in the Dell Avenue. When you have M one, there is going to be like, could be manufacturing or something. So isn't it a fire hazard to not have any setback, like the fire trucks and all should be able to access all sites of the property? That was my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other comments? No. I'll, I'll close the public hearing, but I think that was a good question for staff if Daniel like to address it.
The fire code has very specific requirements for buildings that are built on property lines. Again, you basically have a solid derated wall that's intended to contain a fire and keep it from spreading to neighboring properties.
Thank you. Okay, open up to the commission. Commissioner Sissa.
Um, I, I don't know. We have much more to offer. It seems like it's a sensible code change and I would, I would support both the M one and the C two changes per the staff's recommendation.
Previously, I had, I believe I voted no in the first discussion, but it wasn't a recommendation. It was more of a kind of a pass. I don't think we made any recommendations to city council. I still am concerned to to make changes. However, I I see the adjustment here allows the planning commission. Some say in removing the setback. So I think that case by case coming back to the commission makes sense. There's a checks and balance. I mean, maybe not. There's an opportunity to review it before it proceeded. So I can support that. In a sense, I, the fire code question is very pertinent. We've seen a few, one in Campbell and, you know, one in our neighbor San Jose just recently. So it obviously the code requires the fire rated wall, but still opens some, some concern, but um, I, in general, I can support it the way it's proposed now. Thank you to Planner Fama for cleaning it up and presenting it in this format. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I think it makes sense. Gives us flexibility. The downside, we, we don't want a big mess. I get the aesthetic. You know, we don't want the big bulky mass. And I think we have that flexibility to rule on that. So it seems like it's a pretty counted thing to do and it seems to make sense. I'm all for it.
Thank you. Um, having been through the pandemic and we understand how important manufacturing and commercial is to our livelihood, I think it's pretty well thought out and, you know, I will be supportive. Thank you.
I supported the general idea when it came up last December. This looks like a very reasonable implementation of that idea. I'd like to thank staff for identifying this as something that needs to be changed in the code. And I look forward to seeing more spot fixes from staff to help clean up our code. Very much appreciate this.
Okay, thank you. I've got nothing to add. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll just make the motion that the planning commission resolved that the city of Campbell amending chapter twenty one ten of the Campbell Municipal Code to revise the site setback requirements of the C two general commercial and M one light industrial zoning districts. File number PLN twenty twenty one dash one ninety three.
Somebody have a second?
I'll second.
Adam?
I'll take it.
Madam Clark, if you could do a voice count, please. We'll call.
Commissioner Sissa?
Aye.
Commissioner Reverend?
Aye.
Commissioner Kim Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bookbinder?
Aye.
And Chair Ching?
Aye. So that passes six to zero and will be presented at the next council meeting or the council meeting dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty two. So thank you. Moving on to the second item, PLN twenty twenty two dash thirty one. A couple of things I'd just like to say, one, remember me on the previous one, I didn't answer any disclosures from the commissioners. Do we have any disclosures for this particular item?
I live a thousand feet away as the crow flies. I believe I don't need to recuse myself, but I should at least mention that. It's more than a thousand feet if you actually go there unless you walk on water.
Okay, thank you.
In the, in the spirit of vice chair's comments, I live greater than five hundred feet and do not need to recuse. Okay, thank you.
Um, the second item, which is the first time I've come across this, I understand that people speaking, including staff on this subject, have to take an oath tonight. So I'd invite our city attorney maybe to elucidate on this particular part.
Yes, the matter tonight is a little different than what you normally face in that the commission is considering the possible revocation of rights that the subject already, that already possesses. So instead of asking, being asked to grant someone rights they don't possess, you're potentially looking at taking rights away from someone. And because of that, this hearing requires a little more formality than normal in that we will require anyone who is going to be speaking tonight to testify under oath, which I will administer en masse to everyone who wants to speak tonight. So if those wanting to speak could stand, including staff, yes.
And, and city attorney, what do we do for anybody on Zoom who may want to speak?
Ah, do we have people on Zoom who are going to want to speak?
They might. We, we just haven't yet.
All right. They don't need to stand, but they will need to listen. And when I complete the oath, everyone who plans on speaking will need to affirm that they are, that they agree with the oath. So we probably want to ask those people who are online, if we have anyone who wants to speak and open up their microphone so that they can affirm.
If any of the public online would like to speak, we would open up your microphone so you can be a part of both.
Okay. I got one hand raised.
Yep.
Two.
Okay. And they are unmuted. Okay, very good. In that case, do you who are assembled and want to speak solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the evidence that you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Have everyone? Okay, very good.
Okay.
I will turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Thank you, city attorney. I appreciate that. And thanks for everybody for, for supporting this. So I'll read out the item. So this is PLN twenty twenty two dash thirty one. Public hearing to consider a city initiated revocation modification, PLN twenty twenty two dash thirty one of a previously approved conditional use permit administrative planned development permit, PLN twenty eleven dash two eight three that allowed expansion of an existing liquor establishment, Cartoon Lounge, with late night operational hours on property located at three hundred Orchard City Drive, Suite one zero one in the P D Plan Development Zoning District. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed statuary exempt under SEQA. Planning Commission Action Final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Project Planner Director Eastwood, please.
That is me, Eastwood Community Development Director. Give me a second to share my screen. Okay, great. Okay, as mentioned by the chair, the item before you tonight is a revocation modification hearing of Cartoon Lounge. This is a pretty quick presentation. Tonight, of course, you may consider a variety of actions, but generally either a modification of the conditional use permit and administrative planned development permit for Cartoon Lounge, or you may also consider a revocation of the permit. So those are broadly your two options that come out of hearing all the evidence and looking at the findings tonight. Some background on Cartoon Lounge, conditional use permit and the associated permit was originally approved or most recently approved in February two thousand twelve by the planning commission at, and at that time, conditions of approval were placed on the establishment. Most importantly, condition of approval five B sets the hours of operation for Cartoon, which allows the establishment to stay open until two AM seven days a week. There is a clause in that condition that states if more than three verifiable complaints are received by the city in a six month period, the city may take two actions. Action number one is the community development director may reduce automatically the closing time from two AM to twelve AM. And two, then schedule a revocation modification hearing before this body to consider any additional actions. The facts before you, and this is in your staff report. And much of this documentation, if not all the documentation, has come from our Campbell Police Department. Between August two thousand twenty one and January two thousand twenty two, the Campbell Police Department documented eighty two calls for service to Cartoon Lounge. That did a result in at least ten arrests and that's a mix of arrests for intoxication, DUI and fighting on the premises. There were at least ten cases that came out of that of alcohol being documented served to minors on the premises. I had discussed this with the Campbell Police Department, clearly the chief of police in late January two thousand twenty two. While receiving the final reports, I notified Cartoon Lounge, myself as community development director on February third, that that would enact a condition five B and reduce the hours from two AM to twelve AM. So the options before you today and in the record, I'll specifically draw the planning commission's attention to a record that was put together by the police department that documents the calls for service. And if needed, we can show that on the screen as an exhibit later on to look at the record of the calls and the instances of situations happening at Cartoon Lounge and get to the conclusion on the actions you will take. But broadly, certain actions you can take tonight, one would be to modify the use permit. Today, the hours of operation are having the lounge closed at twelve AM. You can maintain those hours of operation. That's one option. Another option would be for the commission to restore back to the original hours that existed prior to February third, two thousand twenty two, which is a closing time of two AM. Or the commission may take other modifications as necessary and we can work with the attorney and see if there's evidence in the findings to make those modifications. So there are a variety of options you could take. Separately, if you believe the evidence to record points to the violation of conditions approval, there's findings you can make to revoke the use permit. It would be our advice if the commission ends at a revocation recommendation to defer the hearing and we would come back with findings and evidence specific to support the revocation action. Staff's recommendation is to maintain the reduced hours of operation with the closing times of twelve AM. And we do request, with that, we would request commission to schedule a subsequent revocation modification hearing in six months to come back, evaluate the situation on the ground, evaluate the calls for service and redecide if a further modification or restoration of the hours is warranted at that time. A couple of reasons behind this recommendation. Number one, as you've seen in the record, there are a large number of calls for service. The threshold is three documented issues. There's been eighty two calls for service in a six month period. There have been ten arrests on the establishment. Number two, there were warnings provided by Campbell Police Department to the establishment, the owner and management to take corrective actions. And specifically, there was a meeting with the police captain, chief of police in the fall of two thousand twenty one, recommending they take corrective actions over the calls and the arrests did continue into two thousand twenty two. Number three, the window of reduced hours in staff's opinion is pretty short. It's been two months. There has only been one call, so that has documented at least in the two month period, there, there's been, of course, a reduction in calls, but given the window since that reduction has happened, it's, it's hard to document a sustained behavioral change in how the establishment's been managed, given it's only been two months. And then finally, we have been in communication specifically through one of the captains in our police department with the state ABC Alcohol Beverage Control Office. They have reported to Campbell that they are, they have an open investigation on Cartoon Lounge. They're still gathering evidence. They're expected to make some sort of decision in the next month or two. And we believe if, if for some reason the decision was to restore the hours operation and then separately ABC was to take a corrective action, say to suspend a license, that doesn't provide a unified response to actions at Cartoon Lounge. So for those reasons, we are recommending to wait for any restoration of the hours until that investigation, one factor, that investigation has been completed. With that, I'll close up my presentation for tonight. I do want to acknowledge we have two members of the Campbell Police Department here. We have Captain Dan Livingston and Sergeant Mark Cutler. Most, if not all, of the evidence tonight is coming from the Campbell Police Department. If you have specific questions, they are available also in addition to me, to the commission. And with that, I'll close up. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Eastwood. I'm pointing questions from the commission.
I, I have a quick question about ABC. Could, could you define what their actions would be if in hypothetical, like can they shut the bar down or just remove the liquor license? And, and that's outside of any Campbell authority?
Yeah, I'll answer the second question first. Yes, outside of Campbell's authority, I have independent, they have an independent liquor license that's issued by ABC and any bar establishment does. I, I'll confess, I know enough to be dangerous about ABC liquor laws. I know of the variety of actions they could take. They could revoke their permit. They could suspend it for a number of days and there might be other iterations between those two.
Thank you. That, that's enough to answer my hypothetical.
I have a number of questions. First of all, in, in the letter from the owner, he mentions, I guess this is a good time to ask questions. About seventy five percent of the calls not being necessarily valid. So I'd like maybe representatives from the police department to respond to that.
Could, could I invite the captain and sergeant up to the microphone, please?
And I, I'd also like to ask if there's a past history prior to August twenty twenty one that's comparable to this or whether or not it's been a good record in the past. And and then the letter also talked about not getting advanced warnings. So I, I'd like a response on, on that, whether or not Cartoon actually did receive some advanced warnings prior to this action, so.
I could respond to the, the last question. Good evening, members of the commission. On the last question regarding if there was any, if there was any notification prior to the planning director, there was a meeting between the chief and Captain White during the Oktoberfest where he met with one of the owners and management regarding the issues that they'd been having. There was also another meeting in the lobby of the police department with Captain White and management from Cartoon proceeding an incident that happened later on that night where Captain White had asked them to make sure that they were reporting parties on calls. And later on that night, our patrol ship responded out there to a brand, well, they were out there and they learned that there was a brandishing of a firearm twenty minutes prior to them being there and they were informed by the bouncer that they didn't want to call because they didn't want to draw attention to the, the bar, which contradicted, contradicted the conversation that Captain White had with management in the lobby. And Sergeant Cutler can, can explain how he vetted the eighty two calls for service that were referenced in the report.
Good evening, commission. So I had our dispatch run all incidents that occurred at Cartoon's bar. I understand we use that address and their suite number to do that. They gave me a list of every incident number. Every time somebody calls regarding an wants the police to come, it's an incident number is generated. I then looked at all the incidents that I was provided from cartoons to make sure it was associated with the bar. I read through each, if there was a case number or a report issued, I would look at the report and/or the incident to verify that it did belong to the bar.
Then one other question I had was, whether you gentlemen know this as far as past history, prior ten years, you know, before this August 2021, since they've had their latest CUP, whether or not they've had lesser problems than we're seeing in the last.
I can attest to years ago, probably at least seven or eight years ago, when I ran a similar report when we were having an issue with a different bar downtown. And they were not nearly close to this level of calls for service. In fact, there was almost no calls for service at Cartoon at that period of time.
Thank you. Sure, I'll just follow up on a couple of those questions. But the, so the ABC investigation of Cartoon, is that for the same reasons that we're talking now? Because there's just been too many police calls and?
I couldn't, I don't want to speculate to what ABC's investigation is. I believe some of it started regarding the underage drinking, but I don't know what else it is.
Okay, all right. And then the, so, so there had been a couple, and you just tested. So there were a couple of meetings between the police and the management of Cartoon before February, when all of a sudden things calmed down.
There were at least two with members of our command staff. And you also have to keep in mind when our offices are out there, our watch commanders are having conversations with bartenders and managers there, letting them know of the issues. So it's not just these two meetings. It's typically when we're out there handling a call, we'll have a conversation with their staff, either their bouncers or their bar staff or management.
Are there other two o'clock bars in downtown Campbell?
There is, Katie Bloom's would be one of them, and I believe the Cardiff.
And others, are there similar? Was there a similar increase in calls to those establishments, or is that, this is unusual?
No, there was not.
I just, I see our threshold, and I don't know if it's standard, maybe this is a question for Rob, but three of three complaints in six months seems pretty low. I think most buyers, you would think that they would have that many complaints. But is that pretty standard, the three complaints, six months as a threshold?
My understanding, and keep in mind, I'm nine months on the job here. It comes from the Campbell's Downtown, Downtown, I think it's called Downtown Alcohol Beverage Policy. It's in your, or the bar policy. And it does establish as a standard for most bars that threshold. And I think that's, my understanding, after years of, not necessarily this establishment, but other establishments in downtown that have had legacy issues, to have a quicker option to react if there's calls for issues at these establishments.
I know it was in the staff report that, I guess it's the general plan that strongly encourages all bars to close by midnight. Do you know if that, was that policy before Cartoon started? It's late nights, or?
I'll have to fall back on the date of that policy. I believe that, I do know this, that the policy was adopted prior, because that condition came from the downtown policy. That policy was adopted prior to the 2000 approval of their conditional use permit, if that helps.
And we say the 2012 conditional use permit, but Cartoon's been there a lot longer. Why did we issue that in 2012?
Yeah, good question. I do not have a lot of history beyond that. My understanding, and that's ten years ago, there was an expansion at that time, a modification of operations that necessitated modifications of their use permit.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I have a question for, for Rob. So the rule says three complaints. What constitutes complaint? Because I noticed it says, like, there were no complaints from the public. What constitutes a complaint?
Well, absent, in the condition of approval, there's no further definition. I'd say the plain definition of the word would be verified that someone has complained about the establishment, and it's not, say, a prank call or something that's not associated with establishment. So verify that it truly is something happening there that responders have verified.
And I have a question for the police that are here. So in the incident reports, which thank you very much for providing, one of them is blacked out. Is that, it was something confidential, or what happened there? It's 2021-5080273.5 PC.
Sorry, can you repeat the number?
Sure, 2021-5080273.5 PC.
What was your question that was blacked out?
Like, in the copy that I have, it's just, it's just the number and the description is blacked out.
Redacted.
Redacted.
It could be something that our records staff believe needed to be redacted.
Okay, I wanted to know if that was an error or something. Okay, that's what I had.
Commission, come go.
Thank you, Chair. So a question for the police. Can you go into a little bit more detail on the DUIs and the minor drinking? You know, how are those, I guess, verified and handled? You know, those really concern me.
A few times it was found during bar checks. I think one night there was close to a half a dozen intoxicated minors in the bar. And there had been previous complaints about minors in the bar, which is why they were there that night conducting a bar check. And then there were a couple of DUIs where minors were stopped and indicated that they had been at Cartoon's.
Oh, so this is DUI of minors, not just adults?
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
Well, let me, let me back up. It's DUIs of those under twenty-one. I'd have to look at the report and see if they're actually minors.
Got it.
I believe that the ones that I read were around twenty. So I don't want to misrepresent that. It was underage, not minors, from my understanding.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Do you have an idea or feeling for how many of the complaints came after twelve o'clock? So in the twelve o'clock to the 2:00 AM period?
That we, I mean, out of the eighty-two incidents, we'd have to go back and do a further analysis of that.
Right. And I picked up on something. He mentioned there was an incident or problem with a firearm. I didn't quite catch it. Could you, could you explain that a bit further, please?
Yes, I went out there one night to hand out some brochures for them for how to identify fake identifications to help them. While I was out there, one of the bouncers approached me and explained to me that there had been an incident involving a brandishing weapon prior to our arrival. And at that point, I investigated it.
All right, okay, thank you. Please.
For the sake of the record, while we have you gentlemen before us, the staff report and the attachments, are those true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
The only thing that I believe we saw in the staff report is, I believe, it references August to January. I believe Sergeant Cutler actually ran the eighty-two incidents from June of 2021 to January 20th. So that would be the actual date range of the eighty-two incidents.
But otherwise, it's accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Just one thing, I want to fall back to get in the record. You had asked about the downtown alcohol beverage policy, and just want to report, that's one of your attachments. It was adopted 2009, amended 2011.
Thank you. Any further questions, please?
Yeah, I suspect this is, this kind of thing is due to most, if not all, the commissioners. So bear with me, I'm just trying to get a little more education on this. In terms of the process that this took to get to this point, Director Eastwood, could you explain how this process has happened? You get regular updates on complaints. Does the, do the police, this chief get together with you and the city manager or whatever to determine whether or not this action should be taken?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm in a weekly meeting with the city manager and all the executives, including the police chief. And oftentimes, he will let me know if there are issues with certain establishments. So as a programmatic answer, that's, that's the way we communicate, or if needed, outside of that. And I'll just say, on the Cartoon Lounge, the Chief of Police first notified me in the fall that there may be issues with Cartoon Lounge. I believe they took the discretion of warning Cartoon Lounge at that time. But then later on in January, he came to me and provided me the full documentation of what you have before you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you mentioned this before, Director, but since the reduction in hours, which I think was on 23rd of February, has there been any other service calls since then?
I understand there's just been one call for service, but I'll let the police representatives add to that.
There's been at least one. We'd have to bet out the other calls, but at least one documented call, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions? Thank you, Captain Siden. Okay. As there's no further questions, I'll open it up for the, for the public comment. I'll invite the representative of Cartoon to come up if they need to, but they're more than welcome to come up and speak. And for the record, could you state your names, please?
Yeah, I'm Brandon Brigham, the Honorable General Manager of Cartoon.
Hans Allen, Assistant Manager.
My name's Ivan Badnich, I'm the bouncer at Security.
Yeah, I set up security. So, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to formally apologize to the city and our dedicated police force. During June and, or June of 2021 and January of 2022, these are the timeframes we failed in our duties to hold this bar to the highest standards it has met since my late father took it over in 1984. I was, as I will explain more, we take that very seriously, and I've taken several key steps to ensure all these issues have been addressed. Before proceeding though, here's an outline of what we will cover in the brief. We have four main topics. One is to identify our common goal. Two is to briefly address the past and how we got here. Three is to share with you the corrective measures we've taken to right our wrongs. And four is to propose a path to recovery. The first question we must ask is, do we share a common goal, us and the city? I'd suggest that we do. This bar has been a success for thirty-eight years in my family. And that's because its goals have always aligned with that of the cities. In response to the events that got us here, I think we have two common goals. One is a short-term goal to effect immediate change and correct the course we're on. Two is a long-term goal to see Cartoon succeed with extended hours. And overall, our ultimate goal is to be an attribute to the community and not a detriment to it. And to promote our shared community standards, which protect public safety and foster responsible commerce. So I'll circle back to these common goals when I get to topic four. But let's move on to topic two, which is how did we get here? I don't want to dwell on this too much because ultimately, we are accepting responsibility for where we are. But I do want to point out a few unique circumstances that cannot and should not be overlooked. The COVID-19 environment. COVID undeniably unleashed an unusual and unique amount of pent-up energy, and we simply failed to rise to the challenge. When the June 15th mandate was lifted, people came out in unprecedented droves, and some of their behavior was extremely erratic. We had lines around the block, and sometimes we had just as many people waiting in line as we did inside the bar. I honestly think that there is and was a correlation between the high number of service calls and people's general state of mind following a year of unnatural isolation. COVID also created a shortage of available and reliable staff throughout the industry, and as such, our business in the community suffered. With a severe lack of available personnel in the hiring pool, we regretfully hired people we thought were competent, but turned out to be subpar security guards. So another issue was the fake IDs. During this unique time, we were overcome with a pandemic of high-quality fake IDs that eluded our initial security efforts, which included a visual inspection with a black light and a computer scanner. But now, I am confident that we have now eradicated this issue due to a recent hack discovered to detect these fakes. Since then, we have confiscated over forty IDs. These are them. I believe the word is out, as we seldom see any of these anymore. This is just one of the changes we have made, and I will discuss more when I get to topic three. There's one other thing that should be mentioned on the number of incident reports and police calls. There were a total of eighty-two incident reports, and this was repeatedly referenced in the city report. I personally looked at every single report because I take these very seriously, as does everyone at the bar. And while some can certainly be traced back to a customer in our bar, I find a majority cannot, from what I read. The incident reports pertain to our entire block, which includes a large, two large parking lots, which we do not have control over or any responsibility over. Several incidents, for example, happened in the parking lot involving people that did not necessarily come from our establishment. In total, it appears that only thirty percent of the incidents trace back to the bar. Excuse me. Now, discussing the unique circumstances and challenges we faced when the lockdowns were lifted and the incident reports, I do not want to give the misimpression that we are shirking away from responsibility in any way. As I will outline in the next topic, number three, even one incident or police call is way too many, in my opinion. And we want this council to know how very seriously we take it and its communities, and the community's concerns. We are making no excuses. We have only taken action in response, which is my next topic. Our solutions. So moving on, I'd like to share some of the things we've made to effect change and correct our course at Cartoon. One, we've hired a Director of Security, which is Ivan here, whose sole objective is to ensure that our operations are in line with community standards. Two, as I just mentioned, we've eradicated the fake IDs and confiscated almost forty fake IDs recently. Three, we've hired an entirely new door team, who all have a California Guard card, and more importantly, extensive experience in the industry. Four, we've made simple yet key changes to further effect change. We are enforcing a stricter dress code. We have filtered out aggressive music from our jukebox to maintain a neighborhood bar feel. We have reduced portion sizes, even the size of some glassware for certain cocktail drinks, and increased prices to deter overdrinking. We have the continued use of Patron Scan, which is our ID scanning device to maintain a band list and identify fake IDs. We have increased our emphasis on filtering out overly intoxicated customers as well. A side note, Cartoon is willing, if needed, to add a doorman to patrol the front parking lot, since a lot of these calls are happening in the parking lots. I realize in doing so, it might be a little bit complicated because it's technically not our jurisdiction. However, maybe that's something we could talk about. So, you know, together, these small changes have had a compounding impact on our overall operations. Though it is feasible that the reduced hours could have contributed, these improved procedures are likely ninety-five percent of the reason calls are down and operations are going without incidents. For example, reducing hours is not going to stop people from trying to get into the bar with a fake ID. It is our procedures that are stopping them. If you look at all of the procedures we have changed, including how we hire and how we operate, you can see that it is these things that have led to the remarkable turnaround from what we saw late last year. And we very much look forward to implementing them through the 2:00 AM closing time to prove this out to you guys. That closing time is familiar to and desired by so many patrons for two reasons. One, only when we are able to operate our revised methods for a full bar evening can we demonstrate that it is our procedures, as opposed to reduced hours, that have solved these issues. Second, the reduced hours are a double-edged sword as it imposes significant hardships on any bar, since our business model is largely reliant on after-dinner hours from 9:30 to 2:00 AM. So this is a four-and-a-half-hour window. So cutting two hours from it is basically a forty-four percent reduction. This brings us to the main topic tonight, though, which is how.
Mr. Brigham, if I could encourage you to move on fairly quickly, please. You've got over five minutes. move on fairly quickly, please, you've got over five minutes.
So, I want to bring up how can we best balance the path to recovery for the bar and the community? Given the rich history Cartoon has in this community, I hope this council would like to see Cartoon once again open till two AM, provided it can do so within community standards. When done safely, extended business hours can add to the overall draw of the town. And so the question before us is how we can replenish the bucket of trust between Cartoon and the city? It is only through action, not words, that we can do so. I hope that you have heard from us tonight that we are heavy on action and light on the words. And so I'd like to propose the following course of action for this council to consider. As we have been operating successfully and with vastly reduced issues over the past two months, we respectfully request that the hours restriction be lifted presently with the condition that we return to you for a further report and review in a short timeframe, say forty-five to sixty days, or even shorter if the council deems appropriate. We are very optimistic that really putting our new procedures to the test this way will be beneficial to all and will yield positive results. The second option would be for the council to continue the limited hours for perhaps another set of months. But again, this is a scenario where we do not have the benefit of seeing all of our improved procedures actually work. As discussed later, the bar cannot financially support all of the staff improvements indefinitely with a forty-four percent reduction in its prime operating hours. So, we sincerely hope the city will favor a return to normal hours with a short leash as opposed to the alternatives, but after this meeting, the council remains. If the council remains reluctant to lift the reduced hours at this time, we encourage the council's recommendation of six more months restriction to effectively include the past two months. In other words, we hope that six month, the six-month period can have a start date of February fourth when our hours were restricted. So that the remaining restriction period extends a little less than four months from today.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to call it a, a day at this point. We'll have, I need to have time for the general public to talk and I'm sure the planning commission have got questions for you. So I'd like to invite any commissioners who may have questions for Mr. Brigham colleagues.
I have a straightforward question. If you're operating hours are two AM, what is the last call? And, and is that held to every night or it's just when the crowds are loud and large?
Yeah, every night it's a half an hour before we close.
So at one-thirty, there's no more alcohol served? And, and then the patrons would have a chance to finish their drink and exit at two. And do you, how, how, what procedure do you use to have people depart it to?
Uh, we turn on all the fan lights, we turn off the music, we kind of safely start telling people to exit the building, pick up empty drinks and just kind of make it seem like the party's over, you know, in general.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Please, Commissioner Gray.
Yeah, I should have asked this earlier, but is there a uniformed private security staff? Is that required?
We do have uniformed staff that we've hired with Cartoon security shirts.
Okay, and then just the other thing, so since eighty-four, have, have any actions like this ever happened before? Have you ever been?
Okay, this is why I brought up the COVID. I, I know my speech is a little lengthy, but there's just so much information to go through, but I think a lot has to do with COVID and people's behavior coming out of COVID. It really was like an explosion.
Okay, just a final question. Can you kind of guesstimate or estimate percentage of your business between midnight and two?
For, for what part?
Just for, for your revenue, I mean.
I mean, I would say we're down forty percent.
So that's, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, I'll start with the two speaker cards. And if anybody who hasn't submitted a speaker card would like to speak after that, I'll invite them to come up to the rostrum. I'll start with Mr. Dave Lemley. I hope I pronounced your name right.
Evening, council members, thank you. My name is Dave Lemley. I originally established my business at five ninety-three Union in Campbell and currently is in Sunnyvale at sixteen-twenty-six Metal Arc Lane. I established my business Good Times Unlimited, a DJ and entertainment, sound and lighting company in Campbell approximately thirty years ago. I've grown to appreciate the community spirit and the family atmosphere this town has always represented. It made me proud to be part of this business community and even after relocating my business years later, I still feel a deep connection to Campbell. As a vendor at Cartoon, I began my relationship with the Brigham family and the Cartoon employee family there just over twenty years ago. And as an entertainer, I found that working for bars, restaurants, clubs generally has a maximum shelf life of about two to three years. For me, sometimes shorter depending upon the environment. However, I stayed with the Brigham and Cartoon family for these past twenty years due to camaraderie and the feeling of family there. A perfect example of that spirit was felt on Sunday where we just had a memorial for one of Campbell's well-known fixtures. As I attended that event and I have attended many other similar events, I've attended the losses the community Cartoon family have endured over the last number of years, it has shown me the outpouring of community support that has always been a mainstay for Cartoon. We've all recently been through some very challenging times and many businesses and their patrons are readjusting back to normal operations and lives. There have been admittedly been some bumps in the road, but I firmly believe that this business will prevail and establish itself as one of the heartbeats of Campbell that it has been over the years. With its thirty-eight years, with the Brigham family and nearly fifty years of existence, it just needs the opportunity. So I please ask you to take this into consideration and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mr. Christian Wellish, please.
Good evening.
And just for the record, could you state your name, please?
Uh, yeah, my name is Christian Wellish. I'm actually, I'm an active-duty judge advocate in the Army. I'm actually stationed out in Hawaii, but I've lived here and I've, I've worked here and I'm very familiar with this establishment where I sort of grew up after growing up, as it were. I've, I don't have any prepared remarks. I've just taken notes and I just wanted to share what I know and why this place is so important to me. And I am under oath, so I can tell you that I have absolutely no incentive whatsoever to be here. I'm purely here out of my own volition because as the previous speaker has said, this place truly provides a family for those of us who may not have a traditional background and may not have the ability to relate to environments, this place is welcoming to all. I know this because I've been overseas a couple of times with the Army and every time I come back, I go back to the same place. That's Cartoon. And the reason why is because it's that one place that never changes, that is always welcoming and it always treats me with respect. And I know several other service members who have sacrificed much more than I have who go back there for the same reason. So, I wanted to share that with you and I wanted to also share some of the notes that I took. I think it's very important to clarify the terms of what is at stake and what are the issues. Now, I noticed that the council member pointed out that the standard is three verifiable complaints, but that standard is not defined anywhere. I noted that the eighty-two calls for service, that's a much different term than a verifiable complaint. I also noted going through the agenda in the incident reports, several of the incidents were calls from Cartoon staff. Now, if those calls count against them, then it seems like it's a little bit of a piling on. It's, it's kind of unfair to call that as a verified, verifiable complaint when it's a call for service from the bar and the bar staff themselves.
I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna need to remind you about the time. So if you come to a close on your comments and get your key.
Absolutely. I just wanted to point out just two, two more of those because some of the things that were mentioned and Mr. East would mention that, or I'm sorry, it was, I think, one of the police officers who, by the way, this is not to antagonize anyone. I have a great respect for the police. My brother-in-law is a police officer. But it was stated that these would not be prank calls, where one of those incidents is a prank call. That would be twenty-twenty-two dash zero-one-zero-two on the incident report, which is a call that was made by someone who verified to be false purposely to be, to get the bar into trouble. And another one was a DUI twenty-twenty-one dash forty-four-one-seven. Again, this is a person who got a DUI and by their own admission, they were drinking outside and never went into the bar. So I just wanted to point those two things out for closer scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the two speaker cards that I actually have. Would anybody else like to speak, please? If the lady behind you, she was the first one to raise her hand. And if you could state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Teresa Stewart. I live at seven-zero South Third Street in Campbell. My husband and I have lived in downtown Campbell for over fifteen years and I work part-time in downtown Campbell. I've grown up in this area and I had my twenty-first birthday drink at Cartoon in nineteen-seventy-seven. And since then, it's always been a place where I felt that I could go and be happy and meet polite, friendly people. And as an older woman who likes to have a drink, Cartoon is a great place. I go in there and it's, it's home, it's family. We had a wake the other day for Bobby Love. It's just a good thing. And I personally will do whatever I can to help make sure that this place keeps going. If it means having old bags there late at night or something to keep the rowdies down. And if people are complaining about the noise, I live right behind Villa Ragusa. Summer, hot weather. I don't have double-pane windows. I got an open mic and I hear the weddings and the music. I don't call and complain. I live in a downtown area. I expect there's gonna be some noise. Anyway, Cartoon, it's a great place. We, maybe we all have to do a little bit more to make it work, but I'm willing to help because I live here and I love Campbell and I love Cartoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it.
So, when you are there, what kind of a balance do you see as far as adults versus youngsters?
Well, I have to admit, I see a lot of people my age and there's some young people there, but it's, it's kind of a cool place to go because there's, there's people of all ages. And, and I end up speaking a lot to younger people who are probably bored with me. You know, they don't want to hear about the old stuff. One thing I do appreciate is the fact that they are playing music that is maybe a little bit older, which maybe makes it better. It, it's, you know, melodies I recognize, which maybe you might recognize too.
I can certainly relate to that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We'll get together and, and a few notes. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody else like to speak, please? Mr. Heller.
Hi, my name is Hans Heller. I'm the Assistant Manager at Cartoon. So I live in one-two-nine New York Court, Los Gatos. I think, I know the time is limited, so I just like to make a few points. Number one, we could all come up and tell sentimental, sentimental stories about this bar and every other bar. Ultimately, public health trumps everything and that's why we're here. So Brandon and I and, and others, we're, you know, we're here to take responsibility for the errors of the past, but we're here really to look to the future. It's hard to get a full picture of what has happened at Cartoon's in the past year with thirty minutes of quick snippets here and there. So, I, I wish we had more time to discuss the context, but, but we don't. Just real quickly, the last twelve years I've spent running a bar in San Jose that I own. I came over to help my, my friend Brandon a year ago as his assistant manager. I, my bar in San Jose is full of unfriendly people. When I started working at Cartoon, it was, it was great to get to a bar with such a great reputation. It was amazing for me to see going back and forth between both bars. The, I had, I had two security guards at my bar in San Jose, whereas previously we had seven at one point. And then at Cartoon's, we had five or six and we kept having issues at Cartoon's. Not at my bar, the Willow Den in San Jose. It was, it was a very strange dichotomy because it should have been the other way around. And I think to Brandon's point earlier, some of it, not all of it, but some of it is due to the extraordinary circumstances coming out of, out of the lockdown. We, we still fell short in many ways. Lastly, I just want to comment with regards to the warning, you referenced the letter from the, from the owner that I, that I wrote, it's actually from me, Hans Heller, it was signed by me. We, Brandon and I were acutely aware of communications with the, with the police report. We had gone to talk to them twice, in fact, with Captain White. The warnings, we, we were not informed of any official warning of the extraordinary number of calls for service, eighty-two. What we were aware of and our internal dialogue was about was the insane pandemic of underage drinkers that we had. And you might think, rightfully so, how is it that you guys have been in business so long and you can't catch a fake ID? It wasn't until recently that we discovered a hack, not through the computer scanner, but through a simple visual inspection of the IDs, the, the manner in which you used the flashlight, that we were able to detect the fake IDs. Ever since then, it's been, we've been eradicating the underage drinkers. So the, for us, the biggest concern is the underage drinkers, that is a, that is a grave concern of ours and of course, the community. We have corrected that. I feel confident that we have done that. Secondly, the calls for service. I, I think that the calls for service, the eighty-two, it's, when we went through and reviewed them, it does seem that they are, that there is a disproportionate amount of them applied to Cartoon's that, that is not accurate, with all due respect to the police force. A lot of that, the reports were redacted. So perhaps we are erroneous in our conclusions there, but I, it's just tough to, to look at all eighty-two reports and throw them all on Cartoon's. I think that there's some crazy circumstances with the pandemic and also the proximity to the parking lots that attribute to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Floyd, those, commissioners, this had a question, please.
Mr. Heller, right? So, I, I hadn't thought of asking this when the owner was up. So, so it sounds to me like prior to COVID, there was a different clientele possibly than what you have been experiencing in the last, whatever, eight months since June. And, and I guess my question was, you know, my, I guess my question is, is that true, first of all? Past history prior to the pandemic, you had a different kind of clientele, a lesser crowd, an older crowd, whatever it would be. And then when the lines started lining up around the block, there was no realization that there was something a little bit different going on here?
I would agree with your first assessment and then with regards to the lack of realization. It wasn't necessarily a lack of realization, as Brandon alluded to. We did have a very difficult time hiring people. There was a, there was a shortage throughout the industry and we did not have the best security team. I, I don't want to put it on there. It's not their fault. I mean, we failed. It was, it was our shortcoming. But that was one contributing factor, which is why we referenced the, the pandemic that created some unique circumstances.
I, I actually had a question, if you don't mind. You've cited some of the, the driving forces here, COVID-nineteen, fake IDs and staff shortages. I'm sure valid, but I'm also type of comparing this with the other bars in Campbell, which I think are Katie Blooms and Cardiff, Cardiff Arm, Cardiff, the Cardiff Club, which also stay open at two AM and haven't had the same problems. So what would be your comments on that?
I would say that Cartoon, it attracts an older crowd until ten PM and then it switches over to a younger crowd, give or take. And Cartoon, I think, has always been popular among the recently twenty-one-year-old crowd. So more so than Cardiff, for example, and I don't know about Katie Bloom's guy, I don't, I don't go there. But I think that because of its popularity with young kids, it was more susceptible to that crowd saying, hey, we can get in there. And then once their IDs started working, it spread like wildfire and we didn't have a way to combat it until we discovered this very simple hack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
My name's Timothy Stewart and I live with my wife Teresa at seventy, South Third Street. And yes, in the summer, it sounds like Villa Ragusa's in my house, same as when you have your festivals downtown. it sounds like Villa Ragusa is in my house, same as when you have your festivals downtown. If you were looking at other bars in history, I would ask them to look at maybe when the spot was there, the the new Campbell Water Tower or whatnot, or when Campbell Brewing Company changed. And things were very different. And granted, you know, I'm older, I'm not out after ten o'clock at night generally because I get up in the morning. But I would ask you to think about something. Cartoon has been a fixture in the community. When there are events, your Christmas parade, your toy things, your Easter Easter parade. This is where these things happen, when there are memorials for people in the community, Bobby Love, Kelly, this is where they take place. This is the only place you guys have where they take place. These don't happen anywhere else around. I mean, they just don't. This is a fixture in your community. It's been there a long time. It is important. It is important for you to find a way to continue this. However you go about that, you'll have to make the choices. But it's an important part of your community. And it should be important to all of you.
Question.
Question, excuse me, Mr. Stewart.
So I would take it that you attend that pretty regularly. You attend Cartoon regularly, would you say?
No, I tend to move around. I'm a people person, a bar person. I like, you know, I don't get this channel on my TV.
Yeah. That and watching grass grow.
I'm an active part of your community.
So.
Maybe not your late night community, because I get up before thirty in the morning, but.
Okay. So my question is, have you ever felt unsafe in the bar? Like, let's say you're enjoying a drink and you.
Um, no, not in Cartoon. Um, in the coop a few times in the spot, certainly, you know, went in there a couple, three times in my guest, stomach communities is where, I mean, I've never encountered someone brandishing a weapon or this or that, but your late night crowds in the the coop, which I would call, you know, Campbell Brewing Company, it was the coop. It changed. And yeah, it was it was more of a I don't I don't want to say the hip hop crowd because, you know, I mean, child of the seventies, my music is different. I don't want to paint a picture on on the young people today. But I mean, I generally don't feel unsafe anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa. You'll be next.
Hello, my name is Christopher Worlick. Thank you for your indulgence. I have worked at Cartoon for twenty five years. I currently serve in the capacity as a day manager. And I've seen a lot of changes in Campbell. Been around a while. Any of you remember North Santa Cruz Avenue in Los Gatos? Well, Campbell Avenue has become the new North Santa Cruz Avenue. That presents a number of challenges. Also, everybody looks young to me now. And I remember ABC classes that I've taken in the past. The technology between detecting a fake and spotting it, it's always in competition, the ability to make the holograms on the ID, the IDs, the licenses. It's a fight. We have to be better at it. We've enjoyed good relations with the police department in the past. I had the opportunity to speak with Chief Burg at the Chamber of Commerce golf tournament. We want to do better, we can do better. Cartoon's been here for six decades. Obviously, the recent history has not been good, but the bulk of the history has been good. We have been a friend to the community and have been active in the community. And we can do more. During the stewardship of Kelly Crowley, that was sort of a golden era. We're very active and very valuable to the community. And we want to, we want to be, we want to do that again. So thank you for your time and please can please consider our legacy when you make your decision.
Thank you. I think Mr. Gentleman over there with.
I am Ripon William, currently at San Jose, but I grew up in Campbell. And I've been going to Cartoon for quite a while. I met Dave and Dave was going there. I mean, my first time there is when I first got out of the service in eighty six, and I was still only twenty. And Dad wouldn't let me, I mean, he'd let me in because I was in with my friends and they were twenty one, but they wouldn't serve me alcohol and they made me leave. But, you know, I mean, I served in Germany and in Fort Campbell and, you know, I I was a drinker and I no longer am a drinker and none of their staff treats me like an oddball. They know non-alcoholic sorry, non-alcoholic drinks to to offer me, sort of like a little challenge. I I try and find new things healthwise that I've learned, and we exchange pleasantries. It is a younger crowd, the twenty something. I don't go there on the weekends. I do love karaoke night. It was well, sort of doctor's orders. I was supposed to make friends and get out of my safety shell and deal with, you know, what are your fears? You know, face your fears. And public speaking is one of my fears, right? Hey, internet. But I've come to really enjoy making friends and I know probably four thousand people that I've met at Cartoon and close friends with probably two hundred, maybe more. That's a lot. Karaoke night, if people don't see me, they're like, hey, what's wrong? Where are you? It feels like home, it feels like family. When they're not there, I wonder where they are. We did lose Kelly, and I I don't know how many of you knew Kelly, but that really, really dropped us out. And I don't think that they're laying this on the COVID. It, you know, when they did the remodel of the building there, I don't know how many of you knew that, we survived that. I was going to karaoke night, you had to go through this little tunnel in the back and everything and.
Excuse me, so you're doing a grand job at public speaking, so you don't worry about that. Maybe too too good a job, so I'll have to ask you to close if you've got a closing comment.
Very good, very good. So although there have been calls, I'd like to say that the staff not being able to call would be worse than the staff being able to call you. Me personally being there, if there's trouble or nonsense, they move those people out. That's that's what they have. You don't have that nonsense in your establishment. And they, especially with the the new staff. I mean, I I enjoyed the other staff, it just they.
Okay, thank you, certainly.
Thank you guys for your service.
Thank you. Lisa.
Good evening. It was David Ball. I live at one one six Alice Avenue, just right around the corner. This is going to be in a note form. Going to submit a letter, but hey, I'm writing to you today as a former and now current employee of Cartoon. Having put multiple years in, I have made a lifelong or I've made lifelong friendships, networked with wonderful patrons, and became even more involved with multiple events the Chamber puts together, AKA like with Teresa and everyone that's involved with the city of Campbell. Go past that. Notably speaking, having met a former Boswell's and lucky enough to have worked by her side. Another name, Kelly, right? Having worked by her side, I've been I've been enabled to work with the Campbell Police. That's all on Doom Park to Cartoon here, literally today. Sorry, I'm a nervous speaker too. Shaking. Anyways, the point being is, I don't even need to read this. Point being is, this establishment is very vital to our community. I've seen it, and I've seen it for the five years I worked in the past to six years now. Here I am down the road back at this establishment. And every bar has their faults, but guess what? We've always arisen like to fix everything, and we've always done it. We've always done it right, and we've always fixed our problems. So with that stated, hey, give us a second chance and we can prove it to you. We're very resilient. Anyways, I'm off to work. Good night.
I'll have to just invite people who haven't spoken before.
My name is Ivan Batinich. I live at twenty one thirty seven Oza Ray in San Jose. I just came, I recently started working at Cartoon in December. They contacted me in regards to improving their security staff. So I started early in December. I've been there maybe four months. I actually spoke with the police about the brandishing of the weapon. But I am here to assure you that we are taking every step to improve our reputation within the community. And Brandon and Beau have taken everything very seriously. What I would consider proactive measures to address the rowdy scene of last year. So I think moving forward, there shouldn't be as many calls for service or any incidents moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody who hasn't spoken, there's a lady at the back.
My name is Sandra Marina. I live on Third Street. Don't want to reveal my whole address. I was born and raised here in Campbell. I've been going to Campbell since I was, what do you say, Cartoon since I was twenty one. I was actually employed there during college seven years ago. Cartoons is like cheers. Everyone knows your name. You're having a bad day. You know you'll run into a friend when you go there, just even to have a nightcap, just to break the bad day. He's kind of like family to me. He's actually helped me with my business now and given me a lot of business pointers, helping with my website. So someone that was, I'm just a customer to his bar, he's actually helping with my business, not even charging me. And I'm just a a patron. So I would say Cartoons is, it would be really sad to see it close because they're forty percent can't make the income that they usually make when they see up till two AM. So it'd be nice to see that landmark stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Daniel Wiegert. I'm a current and former employee of Cartoon. I started working for the Brigham family in two thousand and seven as a bartender, and I'm currently a bartender. I came back in August of twenty twenty one. So I've overseen a lot of the incidents that have happened between August and currently today. I'd say the majority of the incidents happen on the weekends when I'm there. I I don't see most of them happen inside the bar. Most of them do happen in the parking lot, which we kind of, like they mentioned before, it's kind of a hard area to, you know, cover when we're trying to maintain the safety of inside the bar, when the parking lot is much bigger than Katie Bloom's and Cardiff. You know, they don't have enough space to accommodate that many people in their establishments, and then everybody's lining up outside. We can't we can't manage everybody who's outside waiting to come in and everybody inside at the same time when it's not even on our, you know, business property, you know, I mean, the lot is owned by not the Brigams, the the business is owned by the Brigham. So we do the best we can. And when we call for support from the police, it's usually when things are, you know, we need the police to support. And I I don't know if you guys recognize me, but I've been with them for a long time. I recognize the gentleman on the left. And when Mike was the manager in the past, we worked very closely with the police to make sure that we were always on the same team. And if we needed assistance, we'd call them. If they came out, we'd give them information on what happened, who who the parties are that are at fault. And, you know, with the fake ID thing, I've been a bartender for fifteen years, so I've seen all different kinds of fakes. They've made variations that are hard to detect, and they keep coming out with new versions. And the ones that have been coming out lately, they go through our machine, they look real, I put it next to mine, everything passes, it's the same. The only difference is if you put a flashlight on the bottom, it it glows on the outside, and we didn't know that until somebody told us about that. And then since then, we got that stack. Now.
I'm afraid I'm gonna have to.
You want to cut it short, that's fine. Let me just reiterate, the the brandishing of the weapon, I was there the night that that happened. That didn't happen inside the bar, that happened outside, and it was from a San Jose police officer who was off duty. So it wasn't just like a civilian, and I'm pretty sure you guys are aware of that as well. And another thing is, I would like to request that the two months probation period that we've already been on be applied towards a six month as well, because a lot of the employees have been suffering as well as myself from the lack of revenue and income. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question. So the reports say that the bar was serving people past the point of clear intoxication. In your view, like, why was that happening and why, how have you addressed that?
I'm happy to answer that question. In my view, I work very closely with the three bartenders. We usually have three bartenders at the back behind the bar, and we communicate with each other on a regular basis to monitor who's had too much and who hasn't. And so if we see somebody's had too much, we we are all on the same page and say, that guy right there, no more. Security, keep an eye on that guy. And we we are very, very diligent about making sure that people don't get over served. And if they are at that point, we put them on water and monitor them and make sure that they exit the building safely. So as far as that goes, we are very aware of who's intoxicated and who isn't, and we try to maintain the safety of everybody in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Does it ever happen where you ask for the car keys and call them an Uber just to make sure? And if they've gone beyond the point where there shouldn't be on the road?
Absolutely. I mean, people that I've known, that I know that aren't strangers, I've asked for car keys. People that I don't know, I don't feel comfortable asking to take their keys, of course. But we always offer to get taxis or Ubers for everybody. I'll even pay for it myself. A lot of times I've done that, just so I want to make sure people get home safe. And our door staff as well, they also make sure people get, you know, safe accommodations to get home, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have another question. I don't know if you 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 best know the answers, but what's the capacity of Cartoon?
I think it's one hundred and forty right now.
Hundred and forty?
It used to be more in the past.
Do you normally reach that capacity? Is that why you have lines out outside?
Yes, we can't have more than a hundred and forty people in the bar at the same time, otherwise we'll be noncompliant with the fire chief. And we don't want to have any violations, so we make people wait. And a lot of times the incidents happen in the parking lot while people are irritated while already intoxicated from other places they came from. And I've witnessed many of those altercations happen in the line before they even get.
So is it you reach the capacity a lot on, I assume mostly the weekends, but.
Yeah, I mean, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I'd say Friday, Saturday nights mostly are our busiest nights, and we reach capacity by eleven o'clock. And we have lines out the door for the rest of the night, even up until one thirty, people are still waiting to come in, and we have to deny service to a lot of people just because we can't, we can't accommodate everybody. And the parking lot's big and there's it's like a big waiting area where people, it's it's not like being on Campbell Avenue where it's narrow and small. You don't just see people clustered on the sidewalks. It's a huge lot. There's a lot of space for people to just kind of graze, and that's kind of, you know, what happens.
Are you talking about the front lot?
The front lot, yeah.
So in terms of parking lot, I was going to ask, are we also talking about the first street, the garage as well? Is that used extensively?
Are you talking about the one behind the building?
Yes.
That is used a lot by employees. I don't know so much for patrons, but the front lot's always full. And I always have to park in the back or walk. I live on ten seventy one El Solio, which is a five minute walk down the street. But the front lots are always full and this adjacent lot where the water tower formerly a spot or whatever, that place is always full as well. But the lines and the crowds of people, they just hang out in the vicinity, whether they're in the bar or they didn't come from my bar. There there's just always people lingering until even three o'clock in the morning sometimes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess one other question I had is whether or not there's common, and this probably goes to the cities or the police, in terms of overflow into the neighborhoods on the weekends, is this a common problem in terms of parking? I don't know if anybody can answer that.
Well, I've actually had to park in the neighborhoods myself on several occasions, especially during the festivals when there's nowhere to park and I have to come to work. I either have to A, plan ahead, take a taxi, or but there's also busy like. Or, but there's also busy, like, uh, they did the, what is it, the, the wine walks and the bands on.
I'm not talking about the 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 events. I'm talking about like on Fri- Friday, Saturday nights.
I've had to park in the neighborhoods.
Flow into the neighborhoods or not.
Yeah, I've had to park at the light rail station in the neighborhood, sometimes across the street over on uh, I forget the name of that street, that's by that lunatics. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know which town.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
Sam Kava? I think is the name of the street.
Thank you. Um, I swear, gentlemen. Would you come to the uh and?
Mark Donahue, just here to represent. Bar that I love, um, when they get off at eleven thirty, it seems to to rile all. Everyone to go to the other bars that are still open until two AM. That seems to be more of a problem than that I've seen. Than keep the people at at cartoons until two AM. I mean, you, you know, everyone's. Trying to get in line at Kitty Blooms and it's, it's a, it's a lot more of a hassle, I think. You know, for the cops, for for them to like take care of that and and to make sure every, everyone's in charge. Then have people in cartoons itself until two AM.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to mention this earlier. Um, again, Daniel Wiegert, uh bartender at Cartoon. Um, all of our staff is ABC certified as well, so we are aware of all the regulations and rules and how to, you know. Monitor and pay attention to who's intoxicated and who isn't, like kind of like a stoplight, I think they used to call it back in the day where it's like. Green, yellow, red, where you, you know, green is, they're fine to drink, yellows, uh, red is done kind of thing. So I just, we're all certified and we've taken all the um courses to make sure that we're compliant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't already spoken tonight, gentleman at the back.
Well, like most of the other people here, I'm also not a great public speaker, but I'll try my best.
Could could you uh, sorry, have your name, please?
Yes, Victor Doctor.
I'm sorry, Victor Doctor.
And for most of you to know, I'm not a Campbell native. I actually come from outside of Campbell. Particularly because of Cartoon. Uh, not only is it because of the friendly, most diverse environment in the bar scene that I've seen. Uh, it is also because uh when I come out to Campbell, most of the time, it's. When I don't have anywhere else to go and I need somewhere to, you know, kill some time and everybody there is pretty friendly. But we already know all of that. We're here to address some of the issues that led up to the circumstances that are being addressed today. And as somebody who comes from a background of business and business operations. Uh, the initiatives that I've seen Cartoon take to address all the pain points that uh have been arisen tonight. As far as, you know, uh, the excessive service calls, uh, but I came here to be that beacon. And like that perspective as a third party, as a patron, not as someone who's maybe like a best friend of the owner or somebody. To be able to say that, you know, from pre-pandemic, I've seen the environment from during the pandemic and afterwards. And to be able to shed some more light into, you know, many of your questions as to really understanding. Have the necessary initiatives have been taken to address these issues to make sure that moving forward. You know, you guys aren't running into that circle again.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, um, anybody else who hasn't spoken? If not, we'll go to the Zoom calls, please.
Mr. Lopez, would you like to make a comment?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Robert Lopez. I'm a resident here of Campbell. Uh, been here for, I don't know, ten years or so. Um, initially started living near downtown uh because of uh apartment complexes. I was, I was a young professional. I used to go out to the bar scenes. I have a family now, haven't been to cartoons in maybe eight years. Uh, the the one thing that I, um, so so I have no real vested interest in cartoons uh itself. The one thing that I, a comment that I'll make about to staff or this council is just to think about the um. Environment that you're uh trying to foster in downtown Campbell personally, uh, you know, I I. Campbell I view as a very diverse neighborhood, young people, old people, uh, you know, art artsy types as well. Um, and young professionals and older retired people. So, you you know. Uh, I think that there's already a lack of late night places for the younger crowd to go. I think it's natural that. Uh, a bar is gonna get calls. Uh, so if you guys don't want that issue, you know, don't issue liquor licenses. I think is the, the, the hard and fast, you know, the, the extreme in one way. I- i- if you're trying to foster a community, um, you know, i- it sounds like you guys are hopefully. Uh, looking for ways to work with this, this business. It sounds like I, I have no backstory on what uh went on last year. Um, but one right, one, one comment is, you know, if, if, if the business isn't taking any of the suggestions that you guys are making. Um, I I don't know if fines are levered, levered at all. I mean, it sounds like this business wants to work with and improve. Uh, you know, the, their staff and the behavior of their patrons. Um, a- and if they don't hit the mark, I mean, I think a financial, you know, penalty is always a really strong incentive for, for businesses, right? So I I don't know what, to what degree the, the city actually has.
I'll have to ask you to close now.
Yep, and and I'm closing now. So I'm just saying, you know, a- a- as, as you kind of hand down these, you know. Um, you know, restrictions on bars and whatnot, i- i- it also has a general effect on the uh, the community. So i- if you'd like to continue fostering a lively downtown, I, I think there's, there should be some sort of way to work with the businesses to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We have the next, please. Uh, we're going through the Zoom calls. Okay, um, the gentleman there.
My name's Rocky Curandolo, um, born and raised in Santa Fe, California. Just on the other side of the border. I remember. When the streets out there in Campbell, downtown Campbell, used to roll up at seven o'clock at night. Till the cartoon came in here in the bodega. When I was a youngster, twenty one, twenty two years old, going over there. Uh, cops used to sit in the parking lot around closing time. And patrol that area. What was going on here has been going on since the establishment of downtown Campbell and the renewal of it. I just wanted to let you guys know that wasn't for the cartoon, there wouldn't be much down there. Um, except for uh with, with the Google boom, with, until then, Campbell was nothing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, any other comment? So, yeah, I'm afraid just aren't uh people who haven't presented. So, um, Mr. Brigham, would you like to respond to anything? Um, any comments before we close the public debate? Okay.
Yeah, real quick, uh. You know, this bar's been here almost a half century. And it's been in my family my entire life, um.
Yeah, that's true. That's a good point. So we have one more.
Oh, yeah, don't worry.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sure you'd like to speak.
Uh, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Hey, uh, so a quick thing, while I have been waiting for the planning commission meeting about the housing, this topic came, uh, came up. Um, even before this meeting, I have read it online. I just had common sense questions on based on, uh, and I made points even before anyone started talking. So, um, first of all, I appreciate the staff for preparing a detailed report. I never visited the bar. But as someone who was twenty one before and has partied a lot and drunk, I thought this is a, you know, interesting thing to provide feedback on. Um, how does it help to reduce hours when there is no way objectively, we can say these incidents would happen before twelve PM? And will happen after twelve PM. Man, that doesn't say, makes sense to me. Um, from the perspective of a drunk person when I was twenty one. I didn't see data in attachments to justify this action that before twelve, we have something and after twelve, we don't have something. Is there proof that the bartenders have willfully served alcohol to people below twenty one years old? And also, isn't that in the purview of ABC to determine that? I'm having a hard time to understand how is DUI the fault of the bar? You know, when people do bar hopping, they drink at a lot of places and they navigate the most popular bar towards the end. And if you like, look in Google, you know, Cartoon is like four point two out of stars out of fo- four fifty nine. Looks like a popular bar in, in Campbell. Also, we all know that people have gone crazy once everything opened. I was in Disney World with my kids, November twenty twenty one.
I will have to ask you to uh cl- close your comments, please. We're out of time.
Okay, restricting, restricting a longstanding business, existing rights based on a short period of six months, that too at unprecedented time. That humanity has not seen, where there is staffing issues and all kinds of things, is not too justifiable. Uh, maybe give like a six months mark or like a temporary period to observe and regroup and analyze and see if Cartoon has done the best. Our staff has done a very good job of bringing, making it by bringing it to this forum and making a point that the business has failed. To live to the community's expectations.
Okay, I just, I thank you for your comment. I have to stop you at this point. Okay, uh, I'd like to invite back Mr. Brigham.
Yes, as I was saying, you know, this bu- this bar's been here a half a century and that's a big deal and nothing that should be taken lightly. I do realize there's been. A lot of issues, right? And it's embarrassing to admit, but they happen. Um. But I think we are very proactive in handling these and getting a hold on this stuff. Um, but we totally welcome staff's recommendation for a probation period. I think that makes sense. Um. What would help us is, you know, we've kind of served two months of time, so to say. And so my idea was we could attack on the four month period and. I mean, it's up to you guys on the hours that you give us back. Obviously, we'd want more hours back, but that might not be. Possible at this point. Uh, even a one AM, one AM extension would help tremendously. Um, but, you know, it's up to you guys. But we do have financial limitations that, you know, I'd like you guys to be aware of and it's, it's been tough. I mean, we barely survived COVID. I mean, I remember the beginning of January twenty twenty one, we had ten thousand dollars in the bank. I mean, we barely made it. Um, luckily, our landlord was very helpful with us and gave us some deferred uh rental months. But um, you know, it's just, it's been crazy and it's no excuse, but uh it, I think that environment should be considered. Uh, as far as like the, the post-COVID and the mandate getting lifted and all that, I think it has something to do with these numbers. Cause real quick, I did look at the numbers for the periods of June to January for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. In twenty eighteen, we have thirty four service calls to the three hundred block. Twenty nineteen, we have forty service calls. Twenty twenty, we have five. Five, twenty twenty is when COVID happened, right? Everyone's in us inside. And then twenty twenty one, it just doubles. And that's when the mandate is lifted and people are able to go back basically into the wild and try and be normal, but they weren't. So. Um, yeah, I just hope we, we take those factors into account. I mean, we are working on our end and we're very proactive. We love Campbell and we want to be here for as long as we can, so.
S- thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
I'll close the public hearing and open up to the commission. So I'll look in this direction or in that direction. Um, so Commissioner Cray.
Oh, okay, yeah, you know, I. Obviously, the, the bar goofed up and and has they recognize it and. We really want to support our police and we don't want problems like that happening. How it got that bad, you know, so quickly. It is a little, it is a little mystifying, as I think we all know. It did seem like the, the, some of the kids found out this was the place to go with the fake IDs and had no problems and. We could theorize forever, I guess, what really happened. Uh. And you know, you know, a- and I know, you know, we're pro, we're pro business, we're not anti-residents, you know, we're, and we're definitely pro police. So kind of wind up in a, in a, in the situation here where, you know, it's, it's a tough situation. But uh, you know, I uh, it is a long time business. It's been there for a long time. It's that, I know this staff report said only two months of uh. Uh, since uh the problems have uh almost ceased, which maybe is not enough time. So uh, I I really think our question here is, you know, give, we, we, we want to give them another chance, we want them to come back. Let's check and see how things are going. Uh, the question is, my mind is, do you want to, you know, do we want to go back to the two o'clock hours right away? Or or stick with the midnight hours for now and see how things are going in a few months? So uh, you know, that's kind of, kind of where I'm thinking right here. I do think it deserves another chance. I think they've turned things around. I think they got the message, you know, it, it's too bad it had to come to this, obviously. Uh, but you know, overall, definitely a good business and a plus for, for Campbell. And uh, so I would, I, I guess I would go with the staff report. Let's uh, let's come back in. I don't know, six months from February fourth or it looks like January twentieth or twenty second was the last incident I saw on there. I don't know what the date should be, but uh, given a few months of things, things, to see how things are going and we'll, when we, when we can reconvene. I guess the only, the only thing in the back of my mind is just wondering what the state investigation will find and if that would. Be something that uh we would want to look at after the state investigation comes in, but, cause we cross that bridge when we get to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimko?
Thank you, Chair. Um. So uh, when I read the staff report, I actually visited Carter for the first time today, you know, I just got in there, walked around, you know, trying to get a. You know, understand the place, you know, um. I came in here thinking maybe revocation is the right thing to do. But then I heard your testimonies and I learned more about the history, the legacy, the, um, I felt the. Uh, sincerity of, you guys really want to turn this around, you know, and so. Um, so now I'm thinking more like Commissioner Cray is that his second chance is warranted, you know, um. Six months, you know, is warranted, you know, uh, cause some of the things we care about is, it's not just the patrons. Their safety, but our officers, you know, I don't want officer to get hurt because tending to a call. Um, I, the burden on the city, you know, the budget that when they have to make calls, something that the operator and the. Business owner needs to bear. Um, so uh, you know, so that. You know, um, was the other things I was thinking about. When it comes to fake IDs, of course, you know, the technology gets better and better and better. I actually heard that people actually use each other's true ID, you know, you just have to make sure they look like that person. A little makeup, you know, and it's a true ID, it's not a fake ID, you know, so how can you tell, you know, who's who? So, um, these are all the challenges of running a business and I understand. Um, but through the testimony and back and forth, what I realized is your, your crowd. For early on is the elder crowd, you know, much less trouble with them, you know, locals and, you know, turn customers. And it's the later crowd, you know, past ten, eleven, you know, as it's a, when it's when the trouble starts. So I think twelve o'clock is probably the correct um ending for now. Just to get our bearing straight again, you know, and um, and let the people, let the patrons understand, you know, that you guys mean business. You know, and you're serious about your license and it's a conditional use permit, so it's conditional, you know, you gotta keep your end of the bargain. Um, so um, um, to make a, long story short, I will be supporting the staff's. Um, recommendation into six months um and um from February fourth. You know, uh, to, um, you know, so we need, I guess, right after that to decide.
So, so that's actually, if I understand, different from the staff recommendation?
Well, I mean, the six months, but with the variation for it to start from February fourth rather than from. Well, I mean, the six months, but with the variation for it to start from February fourth rather than from the date of this.
Thank you. And sorry, Commissioner Craig, um, you would support the same?
Yeah, the same thing. I'm ready to start the six months going on, February fourth.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zizzi.
Yeah, so um, yeah, I I I'm certainly not. I'm not interested in pulling pulling your C U P. Um, I'm unfamiliar with cartoon. I haven't been there in a while, actually, since the renovation. I've dropped him a few times over the years. I've been in in the downtown area for over twenty years and I think maybe I was even stopped in cartoon well before that. Um, and I always liked it. It was nice, what we used to call a fur barn. Yeah, so so I was like, I like the nice, the sofas, all that kind of stuff, you know, but I I didn't go in late at night, so um. Uh, and I'm way too old for that now, so uh uh but but I I I certainly appreciate um uh your um your your letter to the to the commission and and your solutions in explaining your situation and um having um having recognized that you made some missteps. You know, the the this, this, you know, there was a big thing, I don't know what it was, a decade or so ago, about concern about too many alcoholic beverage places in the city and and the council clamped down and 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 there was concern by the residents about becoming too much of a bar scene again. So uh because of the renovation, you know, the redevelopment of the downtown had become successful and it's become a destination. And I think most residents love uh the revitalization of downtown Campbell. It it has become a good place, but with that comes issues, right? So so you know, there's probably uh, you know, a break between whether uh, you know, amongst the Campbell residents, whether whether it should be a lively place after midnight or not, you know, so that's that last two hours is 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 where the controversy comes in, I think, amongst residents. I'm happy, you know, I I understand, I have two sons who, before they got married and had kids, uh, you know, went out and had a a few drinks uh on weekends and and so I and I was young once. So um I I understand that there there is a, you know, a place for that. And I think what people worry about whether or not it gets out of control, whether there's issues that occur. Uh, you know, there was a shooting at the spot some years ago and people got really concerned after that happened, you know, so so I think that there's always that question about keeping Campbell to a nice family-friendly place for the most part, while still uh, you know, allowing for opportunities for entertainment and 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 being able to go out late at night. So so I I I'm uh, I think we're getting a consensus here. I I would you know, I I I've, I'm going back and forth on the question of whether we should have maintained it at midnight or whether we should push it to uh one o'clock, but I I think um I'd go along with the other commissioners on on making this, you know, from February fourth, give you the another four months at at the midnight and and then and then uh take a look at things to see how things are going. It's it sounds like things are going much better the last two months. I hadn't realized that, you know, you guys were that popular and that you were having these long lines. Because even though I live fairly nearby at Mon, I'm I'm on the north side, so I don't I don't hear the noise. So uh I'd be, I'd be uh agreeable to the uh to the February fourth start for six months and holding it at midnight for now and then revisiting this at that time. So I wish you guys luck.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it brief. Nothing that's been said up here sounds incorrect or wrong to me. I've visited cartoon. It's actually been quite some time. The pandemic, I actually stayed away. For various reasons, I also have a family, but I I do like the establishment and know of it and I I live obviously more than five hundred feet away, as I mentioned, but I can walk there um on an evening if I wish. And I'd be, I'm definitely in support of of what my fellow commissioners have said. I I did see from the applicant and, you know, the the team here that's come before uh public record and under oath that there is a genuine remorse and action plan in place. It wasn't just, we're sorry, we'll do better. They actually have implemented processes and are taking it seriously. Obviously, livelihoods are at stake and that, you know, will bring better behavior. So I'm I'm glad to see that's taking place and we would want as a commission and and just all citizens of Campbell would probably want to see that go on forever. So whatever, you know, comes out of today and actions that come out of today don't lapse or or change them. And then um it it doesn't sound like there was much variation in my fellow commissioners, but I'd be willing to, you know, allow them to close at one A M to see how that behavior performs over the next four months, which would include the the two months. Uh, but that would mean a last call at twelve thirty. It wouldn't mean a last call at one, but that would that would allow us to see a little bit of of later nightlife. I think the summer's coming and, you know, obviously people will stay out later, um given later light hours. I know we're still in spring, but when summer does come and and then it would be clear if the action that's taken and and we'd want to partner very closely with the police, uh, you know, and their reactions. And then if it if it caused an influx of added calls, added bad interactions, which we're we're here for, then we'd have another immediate revocation discussion. I know that puts a burden on our city staff on on planning. Uh, but I I would be open to seeing this again in four months, but obviously sooner if something else happened in in that interim. Um, but just to the applicant or the the team here, I mean, take it seriously. I I think you are, but but any change or extension uh that would come from anything this evening. Don't, you know, rest on your laurels. There will still be fake IDs coming. There's there's bound, like you had mentioned, there's bound to be bad activity in the parking lot and it would be good for you to continue to partner with uh the police staff and make sure you're you're doing your due diligence.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate all the people coming out here to speak. It is not easy to get up to the mic and address a group of officials. While we're limited in our jurisdiction here, as I understand it, we can't take the economic while being of the business as a factor here, the cultural value the cartoon provides the community, that's for the city council to do. I really appreciate the people who feel strongly about this, that you came out here and spent your Tuesday night here. Thank you. I encourage the bar management to coordinate with the police on fake IDs. I assume they see a lot of those. They might be ahead of the curve. As I understand it, it's an arms race. The sellers of fake IDs might take another step forward and you'd be right back where you were. Maybe better lighting or some kind of crowd management or anti-loitering policy in the parking lot. Problem comes from, you know, having a hundred and fifty people milling around for hours on end. You might want to find a way to prohibit that. I appreciate that the bar has made extensive changes and has much less in the way of these problems since the hours have been moved back. I agree with Commissioner Rivlin. Um, I like the idea of, like, my original idea was moving back to one A M at the three-month mark and two A M at the six-month mark to give us a clearer view of how moving closing time later affects how well managed the crowd there is. Um, I'm not particularly like nailed to the idea of at three months or at two months, but um I think gradually ramping it up and seeing what happens. Um, the only reason I'm in favor of doing that is that we've heard that um they've made specific changes, which is kind of what we're looking for, and they seem to have been effective against the problems that they had the revocation in the first place for. So uh, that's where I'm at on this.
So to be clear, you're saying six months from the fourth, but one A M.
From the Yes, so the the six months, so we figure it should be, they should have a six-month period of some kind of probation and I would say at either now or the halfway point, their closing time should be moved up to one and then at the six-month point, move back to two. Um, I'd also endorse um restoring their uh outdoor dining, um the the parklets that got removed. Mainly because I think parklets are generally good and I don't think that I think that the city is worse off for not having parklets. Is that, is that clear?
I think so. So you're saying twelve and three months, then halfway, so it'll be two months going to one and then two? Is that what you're saying?
So it's been two months, so either now or a month from now that move the closing time to one A M and then at the six-month point to two A M.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so so my two pennies. Um, yes, you know, there's obviously a problem here and no, I, being old, I don't sleep very well, so I occasionally walk past quite late, so I do see the challenges there. Um, I think it's different, difficult environment to um manage, which is actually an issue, uh but there is a problem. What concerns me is um public safety, um especially with DUIs. If somebody does get drunk and kill somebody, I would feel, personally feel bad being on the commission if we didn't give a proper time uh to try and get this fixed. So um I think going back to uh going back to the original hours now is wrong. Um, I'm I'm not in favor of one A M either. I I'm I I I'm in favor of the six-month period from the fourth of February um to give them a real chance to get this under control, but there is a problem, right? And whatever the mitigating circumstances and ability of the arguments, which I believe there is a problem that needs fixing. And I think it needs a substantive period for that to be um to be implemented. Because DUIs, you know, they do result in deaths, right? And um is attracting the younger, younger crowd um after twelve o'clock. Um, so that would worry me a lot. And I I think it is also about a general message we give to to establishments where we have service calls, service call problems as well. Um, so I would be in favor of six months, but from the six months from the fourth, but restricting hours to twelve o'clock. Now, that means we've got split opinions here. Um, so I think maybe.
Do you want to do a straw poll?
I I I'd I'd go along with that too. I I have, you know, I I had thought about the one A M thing, but I'd stick with the uh twelve A M for the next four months. Um, I would not be in favor of the parklets. Uh, to me, the parklets are it's most, it's a dining thing and and having parklets, people drinking outside at a drinking establishment in the parking lot. It that doesn't feel good for me, to me. So I would not be in favor of reinstating uh the outdoor drinking in parklets.
Okay. So let's do a straw man. Uh, those in favor on the commission for the one A M, if I just call it that.
With some further nuance, but in general, like I'll vote towards that with further nuance.
Okay, and commissioners in favor of the twelve A M from the fourth? So what I would propose is that we adjust the um revocation to start from the fourth of February. But apart from that, keeping the wording as is. Unless any of the commissioners particularly want to bring up parklets.
I'm not like, Commissioner Zizzi makes a good point. You know, sidewalk dining is somewhat different from sidewalk drinking.
Uh, Director Eastwood. I I'm sorry, the the public hearing is over. Uh, I'm I'm sorry, no.
Hearing is closed. Um, I was just gonna offer to lay back. You'd have to make a motion second and an action, but I I believe what I heard from you is staff recommendation, but to take into account the two months as part of the six months starting from February first. So under my calculation, uh, the six months would end in August and we would bring this back at the second meeting. You're the first or second meeting in August uh for a subsequent revocation modification hearing.
Yes, that's correct.
So do we need a motion on that or?
I'm happy to make one.
If if you, if you would, Commissioner Craig.
But Director Eastwood just had a recommendation, a resolution approving a city initiated modification P L N twenty twenty two dash thirty one of the conditional use permit administrative plan development permit. Reducing the hours till to a closing time of midnight until uh August first, when we will return for a review and possibly restoration of the original hours.
I I generally hear it. I just want to confirm something before we vote or there's a second. This is a continued probation and it would be required at that such hearing to
It's required, okay.
To move forward with any changes. So I am supportive of a continued probation, um if that makes sense. I I think that's what we're all saying. I just want to be clear.
And I think that's the motion.
Do I have a second?
So uh this is a decision of commission. Uh, it's it it puts it in place unless they wish to appeal.
That's correct, that's correct.
Now, just reading the record, I've looked up the date. It'll be the August ninth, playing commission meeting.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Uh, Adam Cloke, if we could have a call, please.
Commissioner Zizzi.
Aye.
Commissioner Woburn.
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Aye.
Commissioner Craig.
Aye.
Vice Chair Pukrinder.
Aye.
And Chair Ching.
Aye. That's carried six to zero. Um, this appeal is in, this is a final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Thank you. Okay, um, just looking at the time, does, how do we feel about taking a a break or do we want to push on to the next one?
Could use three minutes.
Okay, uh, what's time now? We'll reconvene at uh nine forty-five.
You're up, Stephen. Now we're safe. Just kidding. You're gonna get through. Do you guys have people here or no? It's not that kind of party. It's just for your.
We've been able to hear other people. I think it means the problems on his end.
Oh, hey, guys, you just came. You guys have been muted up until now. I get the gist you're asking for me. So I'm here and you just came off a mute.
So Ben, you're, you're on. If you're, if you're able to present, go ahead and share your screen and start your presentation.
Absolutely, and forgive me if there was any introduction that I didn't hear, so let me get Sharon.
Does this mean that you should read the item yet again? Okay.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to.
So we have to caution, I think we have a backup plan. Uh, so Stephen, your instincts were correct, Chair Ching. So Stephen has a, uh, the slide deck and, uh, just to keep things moving, uh, asked Stephen to go ahead and just cover the slides if he can, uh, until we have Ben back.
All right, my, my apologies. I'm getting through the technical difficulties. Hopefully you can see my PowerPoint now.
Uh, okay, yes, we can. Go ahead and share your entire screen and you are now good to go.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your patience. So, uh, good evening. My name is Ben Ritchie. I'm a principal with De novo Planning Group. And this evening, we're here for a notice of preparation scoping meeting associated with the city's general plan and housing element update. So I have a very brief presentation. I'll talk about the purpose of this evening's meeting, provide a brief summary of the environmental review process, talk a little bit about issues that will be addressed in the environmental impact report, next steps in the process and how the public can provide comments throughout the environmental process. So we're not asking for any formal planning commission action this evening. Uh, the purpose of our meeting this evening is to receive additional input from the public and from interested agencies on the environmental issues that the draft EIR should address. So the city has chosen to hold this meeting in order to enhance public participation as part of your review of the project under the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. And I want to emphasize that this evening's meeting is not intended to be a discussion of the content of the general plan or the housing element policies or the land use map. The city will conduct numerous public hearings and continues to conduct hearings on the content of the general plan. But rather this evening, we're focusing on topics that should be addressed in the environmental impact report. So in terms of the environmental impact report or an EIR, this is an informational document which describes the potential environmental effects of implementing a project. In this case, the general plan and housing element. The SEQA process provides a forum for public participation in the city's environmental review. The EIR will include an analysis of potential impacts and include mitigation measures to reduce those impacts. And the EIR doesn't advocate for or against a project. It's not going to include recommendations or advice on if the plan is or is not a good idea. It's simply a disclosure of whether or not there will be significant environmental effects. So, uh, to summarize, the city is preparing this EIR as part of the general plan and housing element. The city is serving as the lead agency and my firm, De novo Planning Group, is the consulting team retained by the city to prepare this document. So as part of the SEQA process, we have a couple of key milestone documents. The stage we're at now is called the notice of preparation or NOP. And this basically informs the public that the city has started preparation of an EIR and gives the public an opportunity to chime in on key environmental issues that the document should address. The draft EIR is really the meat and potatoes of the process. It's the detailed analysis of the potential impacts along with proposed mitigation measures. And the last stage of the process is the final EIR, which receives, summarizes all the public comments we receive on the draft, written responses to all of those comments and any changes, corrections or additions to the draft EIR in light of those comments. So here's a little flow chart showing our process. We're in the, uh, orange oval in the upper right-hand corner. We're in the midst of a 30-day public comment period on the notice of preparation. We will then proceed with preparation of the draft EIR, which will then go out for a 45-day public review and comment period. So folks will have a chance to review the analysis, make comments on the content of the analysis, and then we'll move forward with preparation of the final EIR, required SEQA findings and ultimately, uh, certification hearings before the planning commission and city council. So there are a number of environmental topics that will be addressed in the EIR. Uh, if you're familiar with SEQA, this is the entirety of, uh, Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines. So we look at everything from air quality to biological resources, greenhouse gas emissions, public services, utilities, wildfires. There's a number of topics we're required to address in the EIR and they'll all be addressed in detail. And as I mentioned, we are in the midst of our 30-day NOP comment period. The comment period closes on Monday, April 25th at 5:00 PM. Uh, we request that comments be provided in writing either by email, mail or hand delivered to City Hall at 70 North First Street and addressed to Stephen Rose, Senior Planner, and his email address is up there on the screen. And, and I will emphasize, we'll also accept verbal and oral comments at tonight's scoping meeting. And on my last slide, in terms of next steps from here, at the close of the 30-day NOP comment period, we will complete the public draft EIR, which we expect to be done sometime in the summer of this year. That'll go out for a 45-day review period. We'll then, uh, take stock of the comments, provide written responses to comments and prepare the final EIR. And then we'll move forward with planning commission and ultimately city council hearings to certify the EIR. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the planning commission. Otherwise, my recommendation would be to, uh, open up the public hearing to receive comments on the notice of preparation. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners?
So, um, can you be clear about exactly what we're suggesting or looking at? So we're not suggesting particular programs, but we are suggesting, like, um, factors that we want to be considered in the EIR.
That's correct. I'm asking for input on environmental topics or issues that should be analyzed in the EIR. And so we have a very clear roadmap on a detailed list of topics, but this is an opportunity for members of the public to provide additional input on key things that we ought to be aware of in terms of the environmental analysis.
Okay, that makes sense.
Please, Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, but you just follow up on that question. So I, I know we're asking to identify additional issue areas, but then I see the SEQA document and it's, and SEQA's been around quite a while now. And I'm not being funny, but are there ever any items, any issues that come up that are not already being covered by the EIR?
At the general plan level, it is typical for us to not have additional issues that are not already covered by the EIR. This will be a detailed, comprehensive analysis and this scoping meeting is a required procedural step under SEQA.
But it is our chance to kind of maybe emphasize some areas of extra importance, so to speak.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, would it be helpful if you put that list up, uh, Ben, of all the considerations? You have a long list of the things which, uh, will be examined.
As I understand it, these things seem pretty broad. So if there's an aspect of something here that we want to make sure is addressed, that's a reasonable thing to talk about?
Yes.
Cool. I, I have thoughts.
Any other questions before I open up? Okay. I'll open up the public hearing. Uh, would anybody like to comment or speak? Lisa. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jim Sullivan. A couple of things, um, that I just wanted to touch on really briefly. Uh, great presentation by, uh, the gentleman from De novo Group. Um, as you recall, I think this general plan involves, I forgot if it was like 95 or 96 parcels of, of land, right? That are potentially being, uh, amended in the GP and then ultimately rezoned. And so it's a lot of activity that, that they're looking at, and I don't think that it's going to be detailed like geotechnical on all of those parcels. Um, this is a program EIR, so there's going to be follow-on environmental reports that will be done by all the individual parcels. That's my understanding. I think that the big ones are kind of greenhouse gas and, and, and traffic and maybe utility capacity, uh, because we're talking upwards of, I forgot what it ended up being, 6,000, 8,000 units or something like that, which is fairly substantial for the city of Campbell. Uh, one quick comment that I had, um, and just looking through the, the staff report for this evening, I looked at, uh, some of the densities that were, um, kind of listed down, and I know that this doesn't specifically go to EIR considerations, but it does from the standpoint of the number of units, um, that are going to be comprised. And so I think in the, there was a category low, medium density, which was like eight to 16 units per acre. And then I think that the next category was medium density, and that was 18 to 25 units to the acre. And it's just, there seemed to be a little bit of a gap between that 16 and 18. I don't know if that was a typo um, or, or what. And so I just wanted to bring that to the commission's, uh, attention as well as, uh, Director Eastwood and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On that issue.
Comment or question?
I guess it's a comment. I can wait then. I can wait.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
Well, I think the EIS sort of additionally.
And so we just want for the record.
Rocky, Karen, Joel.
Could, could I have your name again, please?
Rocky, Karen, Joel. I think you should address, uh, water supply for that many units. You check, you know, residential over, uh, commercial properties, a big impact on your water supply, water storage for fire protection. It's the only comments I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Clark, do we have anybody on?
Mr. Randall, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear.
Yes. Again, I think the presentation was excellent. I am concerned about the, um, the inclusion of what kind of parking ratios are going to be required for the units? Because that will drive the mode of transportation and the utilization of, of light rail and other, uh, public transportation and other modes within, within the city. Is that being considered?
I, I'm sorry, I lost that. Could you repeat that again, please?
I know you have what, 8,000 units versus, or so being assumed within the, the plan for the next 10 years. Uh, what parking ratio or how many, how, how is this EIR going to plan for traffic for the 8,000 units? Are, are they going to assume one car per unit or are they, uh, for parking? Because typically, if you, if you don't have parking spaces included in the analysis, uh, the analysis will automatically drive to use of public transportation. So is there an assumed ratio between the parking supplied and the units to be built to drive the traffic studies for the impact of the new units?
Right, thank you. Uh, this session's primarily for, for comment rather than questions, um, but valid question, I think it'll come out in the, um, uh, the discussions, if not here, in, in further discussions and probably in the next item actually. Um, but understand, understand your concern. Um, it's not the right form to, to answer the questions at the moment. Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, anybody else who hasn't spoken already? Um, Rocky, since you were very short, it was a very short comment.
Just go ahead and say, sir.
Yeah.
You could do, you know, you need to generate a trip study.
Okay, if you could go to podium, please, if you will.
The E I S needs to generate a trip study of how many people are coming and going, and that'll that'll give you the basic for your traffic study and the impacts as well on the roads as well. Well, I'm sure they've included that. That's typical.
Thank you. If there's no more comment, I'll close the public session and return it to the commission. I'll start with your smiley face, Commissioner.
I don't really have a lot on this because I didn't totally understand what we're trying to do here. I I understand, but so I'm assuming that all these areas will be covered under the E I R. And and all I want to do is reiterate, I think, you know, because of our work on the housing element, this is going to also cover the housing element in addition to the general plan. You know, there's been a lot of public comment about the housing element and and the big items that people were concerned about were obviously traffic and parking, utility services and water, you know, availability for for new housing. And and also, I think people brought up, I don't know if it's really an issue, but people brought up the issue of of school capacities. Whether that's going to be an issue or not, I suspect we're actually, our school capacity has been going down. So but I I just want to emphasize that that those are the things that I've heard and those are some of the things that I I would certainly be concerned about in terms of having a thorough investigation in those areas. And then the only the other thing, and I'm not sure where it is on this list, where it falls on this list in terms of open space. And I noticed in the the numbers that we're not going to gain any open space. And so I I to me, I I would assume that's fall somewhere in the environmental impact report in terms of 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 open space. We either losing open space or increasing open space over the next, whatever this is, twenty years for the for the general plan and and the eight years for the housing element. So those are the areas that I would like to see dealt with to 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 the benefit of of the residents as well as my own personal interest. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I would, I believe it's under biological resources, but I'd ensure that there's a bird safe design element to the I R as well as I don't know if it falls under that same category, but night sky protection. So there isn't excess light pollution as part of this growth.
Thank you, Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, without, yeah, I I don't know how helpful it is going through some of these items and I I but I the speakers and the commissioners already mentioned some of the items that I already wrote down that I was thinking about. One is if if parking is included in the transportation and traffic section, I think parking is is important, but then I also think that, you know, we need all turn, you know, our alternatives to parking is, so are we going to be looking at at light rail use usage in terms of, you know, alternative transportation or will the E I R, is the E I R the proper place to look at bike path extensions and improvements? Couple of other things, the water resources I see is on there and, you know, a lot of times it comes up in the discussions how hey, we can't have all these new residents because we already are in a drought. We don't have water. And then counterargument is, well, it's better to do it in a central city than doing it out on the outskirts because that's where the resources are. So I hope that the water resource is a a big part of it. And the open space needs I wrote down, school enrollments has already been mentioned, you know, utility capacity, water capacity. And the and the other thing, I don't know if it's if it's a part of the E I R, but you know, alternative energy desires and needs and and I guess that I guess that would be part of utility capacity. So just kind of the stuff that we're already been talking about, but these things do keep coming up. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So a couple of areas, area one regarding the E I R. I think if we can prioritize some items over the other, for example, to me, open space should have priority over height. So if a development can provide more open space but needs a higher building to accomplish it, you know, somehow we have to, you know, I would like to see us do that when it comes to transportation, for example. If a development provides bus tickets or light rail tickets or other public transportation type of help to the residents, to me, they should get a bonus for 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 doing that. When it comes to water, you know, water was mentioned. If a development uses low flush toilets or uses reuse techniques, for example, you wash your hands, that water is still going down the drain, goes into your toilet tech to be used for the next flush, you know, that you're going to do if if there are technologies that will take advantage of things like this, I think we need to be cognizant of that and encourage, you know, and, you know, incentivize, if you will. Developers do that. So that's one area that, you know, I would like us to go if there's a way to implement this in the I R. And the second area was what Mr. Sullivan talked about is, as I was looking at the staff report, there are sometimes the gap of one, sometimes a gap of two between the different categories of low density, low, low to medium density, medium density. And to me, we should be closing those gaps. There there should be no gap, you know. So for for so, for example, if low density says anything less than seven and a half dwelling units a year, we should make that eight because the next category starts from eight and goes to sixteen. Well, sixteen is not the correct number because the next category starts at eighteen. It should be eight to eighteen and then eighteen to twenty six. And so these gaps should go away. So designers and architects and, you know, developers have certainty in their numbers rather than approximates, you know, dealing with. And sure, it may, it may result is one or two extra units. But we need the units, you know, it's not like, you know, we're we're have too much housing that we're doing. So just wanted to be on the record.
Thank you. If I can just piggyback on that, it might make sense to allow for more flexibility to have a small amount of overlap between the categories. So, you know, like it would be like eight to eighteen, sixteen to twenty six, twenty four to what have you to allow for more more creativity and and sort of a a more graceful transition between the types.
All for it.
Oh, it is. It is my turn. So the the notes I had here, so actually I had a question. Councilmember Lopez recently posted to Facebook that we're doing a climate action plan. Is that related to this process at all?
So I'll answer that. Robbie Street, Community Development Director. So in right now, the council is evaluating the work plan and budget for two thousand twenty two. And community development in consultation with the city manager and other executives, we put in our work plan to start a climate action plan. The intention is to start after the housing element and general plans completed. We only so much staff at once to to start working on programs. And it's my thought, I don't want to presuppose the results of the I R, but but typically E I Rs with this level of development have some sort of significant greenhouse gas impacts. And then we create a platform for a mitigation strategy that would start evaluating climate actions that the city could take. So ideally, seeing how the I R shakes out would be a foundation to start the work on a climate action plan, but it's staff intent to actually start the real work, probably spring, late spring of next year after adoption of the general plan housing element.
Okay, so if we were to have programs like motorium on new gas hookups or some kind of incentive program for for heat pumps as opposed to gas furnaces or saying that would be part of that?
Yes.
Okay. So the the things I wanted to make sure would appear or would be evaluated here. So we have a noise element. But does the noise element include traffic noise in the sense that traffic noise is pretty much proportional to road speed? We have an air quality element. Will the air quality element note the pollution from California seventeen, the particulate matter both from tailpipe exhaust from road dust, resuspension, from brake ablation and tire ablation, basically from from car traffic, that that's an impact from car traffic and it it has remarkably noticeable health impacts. I don't know if this is relevant here, but like we were talking about transportation element. Do we have a desired mode share goal? Do we have a vision zero sort of thing where we want to drive the number of car collisions to zero? I I think both noise and air quality affect health as does whether or not it's dangerous to be a pedestrian in town. I'd like to know about light pollution. I'm somewhat aware that blue light at night messes with people's circadian rhythms and that it's better to have warmer light colors. And this is in fact a mistake that we've made by replacing yellow sodium vapor lights with full spectrum L E D lights, which look nicer, but they aren't, they're worse for the environment in some ways. And just two other notes is on page ninety six of the packet, I noticed that the word character appears twice. I I would prefer that we not refer to the character of our city in that that doesn't really say anything. We should be more concrete about that. And I just wanted to give my thanks to staff and everybody involved in this process on page one or two. I'm really pleased that we are planning to improve our jobs, housing balance and still add jobs at the same time. Really, really proud of us. Those are my notes.
Thank you, thank you. Just my two pennies. Really just adding adding on to what my fellow commissioners have said, emphasize open space with increase in density, housing, population. Open spaces, understanding impact on that is especially important. Transportation, especially what are the alternatives to the car? And both public transport and such things as bikes. And the third one, public services. I'd like to for us to consider how the increase in density and the demands on public services for disadvantaged people with disabilities and special needs. Because that is an acute problem across the whole of the Bay Area and the lack of those services. How do we actually provision for those services to increase, to maintain for the existing population and increased population? So there'll be the three things I'd like to see highlighted. Director Eastwood, is is there anything else you're looking for from this particular item?
That's it. Yeah, no action on this item. It's basically to accept comment and the air consultant test. Supposedly taking various notes and our job will be to incorporate this into the I R, but no further actions needed.
Okay. Thank you. Which point I'll move on to the final item for tonight, the study session. P L N twenty twenty one dash twelve, study session to review and provide feedback on goals, policies and strategies aimed at producing, protecting and affirmative further fair housing in Campbell and addressing key housing issues facing the community as part of Campbell's Plan for Housing brackets, the Housing Element Update.
Okay, last item of the evening. All right, at ten twenty we got there. So with that, I'll go ahead and introduce the the team that will be presenting most of this. So with us tonight, we have our M Group consultants again. And I think who are preparing most of the presentation is Sun Kwong. He's with us tonight in the audience. Online, we have Aaron Toh, who's author of M Group, and we have the Mister Stephen Rose, capable here to assist in the presentation also. So I'll go through the first couple of slides in direction and hand it over to Mister Kwong to handle most of the presentation. So just to set the table, and we had a meeting about a month or two ago that laid out where we're out in schedule, but tonight's focus is is the first of two parts to focus on housing policies and programs. In parallel path, we're starting the I R. Tonight, what we're presenting to you, some background information on our existing housing element. Information we have on the demographics of Campbell that might drive how we program in different housing programs to address our needs of our our population. And community feedback, we've had at least four to six meetings over the last couple of weeks, trying to engage all stakeholders on on feedback on policies and programs. So we're just we're disseminating that to you and then staff from that is listing a number of policies and programs with some recommendations on which to go forward. So it's not just the first screening, what the thought is, you'd review all this. You'd give your own input on on which priorities you think are, should be the highest priority or should go forward. That will go to the city council next week and the review. And then following that, we'd come back to you at your next meeting, which is about two to three weeks from now with the refined list with some more detail on the work plan associated with this. So this is one of a two star process. And out of all of that, our intent is to put that in a draft housing element that will publish and and made to keep us all on schedule. Because our target is adoption at the end of the year. So with that, on the screen is yelling for tonight. I think I'm advancing this. Again, we're just looking for your feedback tonight and that'll be presented to the city council next week. I think I've hit most of those points. Here's the overall schedule. You've seen the slide before. Again, we are working at a pretty fast speed. But again, the intent is to get through our policies and programs and put it into a draft housing element for spring. And again, the overall target per state law and to comply with state laws, have an adopted housing element by January twenty twenty three. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mister Kwong as the main part of the slides and he'll present the information to you. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Prime Commissioners. Sun Kwong, Principal Planner at M Group. So we'll do a quick review of the existing housing element and then we'll talk about some highlights of the data and the demographics, and then we'll also provide some highlights of the community outreach feedback. And then we'll dive into the potential policies and programs. So the existing housing element has six goals. They are to enhance the quality of existing housing in residential neighborhoods, to improve housing affordability, to encourage production of housing at a variety of income levels, to provide adequate housing and appropriate land uses, to reduce the impact of governmental constraints and to promote equal opportunity for all residents. As the city has been attempting to move forward with the goals, the city has not been successful in meeting the arena. As you can see through twenty twenty one, only thirteen very low units have been built or entitled for low and sixteen moderate. And so we have some recommendations in terms of how we can address that. Part of it is, and this is also in response to H C D regulations and H C D requirements. But each city wants more detailed implementation, including timelines and specific metrics. There are a number of policies and programs that are good and we will keep those and there may be some that we will modify. Some of the things to consider is to bolster the production of below market rate housing as you saw in the in the in the progress of the arena, that that's something that we'll want to focus on for the cycle. Something that's new for this six cycle is making sure that the housing element discusses affirmatively furthering fair housing. And that's done, you know, with the sites, with the outreach and then specifically with with the policy development. Some of the refinements that the planning commission should consider is supporting a broader profile of special needs household is when the commissioners is already addressed. Furthering incentivizing.
supporting a broader profile of special needs household is when the commissioners is already um addressed, furthering incentivizing um ADUs and mitigating displacement. Um, so I'm gonna go over um just some brief numbers and some of the brief demographics. Just to give um the commission a highlight, um, there'll be more data provided in the in the in the public draft of the housing element. Um, but Campbell is growing substantially slower than the rest of the region, as you can see um in the yellow compared to the Bay Area and Santa Clara County. And the senior population is growing in um Campbell, as you can see in that fifty five plus age brackets in in each of the individual brackets, you can see from two thousand to two thousand twenty. Um, there's a growing senior population. Um, there's also a bit of a housing mismatch. Um, as you can see, the average household size is two, but the um the greatest number of housing units, they have three or more bedrooms and they're mostly um ownership, which can lead to affordability issues. Um, there's a little bit of a difference in female headed households with children. There's a little bit more um of those that are below the poverty line line. And then there's a stark difference um in the senior uh population. As you can see, for the seniors that are um that have an income of a hundred percent over the area median income, there's a lot more um owners. And then if you look on the other side of the spectrum, um, under the fifty percent area median income, there's a larger um amount of renters versus owners. Um, I'm going to highlight some of the community engagement and some of the findings, but I'll start with um just what we've done for the community engagement for regarding policies. Um. We had a community meeting on March twenty fourth. And we've had several focus groups and we've had a community survey, which just closed last week. Um, here it is is an example of some of the feedback that we got at when the community at the community meeting. Uh, this is just a word cloud um in response to this question. Um, there are people that that thought that affordability was a a major housing issue, the missing middle family housing. Um, character, accessibility and so forth and so on. Um, in terms of highlighting the comments that we received, uh, people have asked the city to emphasize looking at below marking units, pri- prioritizing hundred percent affordable projects, projects with smaller unit sizes, ADUs, housing near transit, and also promoting affordable housing with um onsite care facilities, whether that's for the seniors or people with disabilities. Um, additional comments um included the emphasis on maintaining existing apartments without raising rents. Um, interested interest in resilient policies, um, support for informing seniors how to downsize. Um, supportive housing on fixed incomes. Again, that's with seniors, people with disabilities and other people with fixed incomes. And then um potential rapid rehousing, especially for female headed households. Um, with that, uh, we want to pause and ask if the planning commission has any questions on any of this information before we dive into the policies and programs?
So the thing that that's that really stood out to me with this was that uh we did to the community engagement and I really appreciate that. And um, so we asked the community, uh, they want BMR units, they want a hundred percent affordable if possible, they want near transit, they want smaller units. And that's exactly what we had proposed at one twenty five East Campbell and the public comment for that was literally ninety percent negative. So I I guess this indicates that one set of these people, we should be taking less seriously. I'm not sure what to do with that, but I think that's just very striking. Uh, we um, you may not have been here for this. We had an uh, the city's first SB thirty five proposal um came in uh for like a I believe a study session uh a few weeks ago. And we had eight written comments, uh, seven which were negative and two in person comments, both of which were negative. Um. I'm not sure what to do with that, but just food for thought.
That was just kind of fine. That was a statement, not a question.
Uh, that's true. Okay, I do have a question. Um. So I don't want to imply that anybody at any point, whether here now or here previously was not doing their best, but we had goals over the last eight years and we seem to have done pretty badly with them. Do we know why? Like, is there a clear like this is what we did wrong and this is what we're doing right now?
Well, I'll start. Um, so two things, uh, the consultant team and staff took a first pass through the housing um element that's existing. And and just so you know, every year we bring in to the city council, I'm not sure if it's always brought to plan commission or review of our housing element, how we've done on producing arena numbers and the status of policies and programs. So it's it's a continual review. Uh, I'd say my observation, hopefully not too factually off. If you look at the arena numbers, uh, the city has not produced anything close to the reading requirements, especially in the BMR area. On the above market, uh, we have, that's very typical for all cities. If you zone capacity, market developers will come in and build, and I think most jurisdictions in the Bay Area have meet their above market rate. So so one part takeaway is is we uh obviously don't have enough policies, programs and actions that support affordable housing development. And as you'll see in in uh staff's recommendation, uh, we need to put a lot more horsepower into modifying ordinances, funding other actions that just direct a lot more BMR units being produced. So so number one, I I just think the lack or observation, the lack of policies and programs that that do that have led to a lot less numbers uh in those categories. Uh, staff has revealed some of the policies and programs in the other categories. I'll say um, the state has changed a lot of the rules since the last time the housing element um uh processes around. We now have a fervently for laying fair housing requirements that was not around last time. We have more specific uh direction to address special needs population. I don't think that was as specific last time. Um, but to provide a broader review, I'd say the obvious thing that staff has identified is again, the lack of affordable housing. And then the state has changed and and evolved um that cities need to put a lot, any more specificity into their policies, programs to be, address a lot more uh topical areas that that weren't on the the laws last time.
So ju- just to understand, so the the city had, you know, goal of providing affordable housing, but our programs were too vague and and not really targeted properly. And the state is sort of pushing us to do that and we're trying to get more specific pro- uh programs in place to produce more BMR housing?
Well, I'd say two different things and Stephen can jump in that. So in one bucket, um, and if you look at other communities in the state, so the Bay Area is one of the last communities to go through the six cycle arena. If you look at Los Angeles, a lot of communities are going through it. A lot of those communities are facing a lot of troubles. Uh, meeting the affirmatively further fair housing standard that has been put out by the state. I wouldn't say that all has to do with affordable housing. That has to do with reconciling legacy issues, racial inequality, special needs population. So so those areas can intermix, but I you could, you could put that in a separate bucket. On the affordable housing, I, you know, as the planning commissioner knows, we do have an inclusion housing ordinance, fifteen percent. Um, but if you if you calculate the, I mean, just like at the raw numbers, the total numbers of housing units we produced and inclusion units came out of that, obviously, we haven't produced enough um inclusionary units from that to meet our our arena requirement. So it's obvious from staff's perspective that we need to do more. Um, either proactively require more inclusionary units, uh, put in policies and programs to generate funding that the city can put into um inclusionary housing or take other regulatory actions that you ever incentivize or require more affordable housing.
And I'll just briefly add, um, so in in addition to the policies and programs which we include in the housing element and how effective those may be in achieving additional affordable housing production, the the other big side of the the picture is the densities which we consider and propose and allow in our community. So as part of the housing opportunity site map, we have included and planned for uh densities triple that of that which we have right now in our current uh housing element and general plan. So that takes into account feedback which we've received from affordable housing developers that had indicated like sites like the VTA station on Winchester Boulevard need higher densities like seventy five units to acre in order to take advantage of uh tax increment financing and other things which help make these projects pencil. So with some of the, some of these new units may also be realized by the the plan for densities is my point. So if if those densities do be, if they are realized, those will also help us achieve our numbers.
Thank you. That that's, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um to follow up on uh the questioning, um. I mean, we have to be honest, if there wasn't a big penalty in this year's cycle, I don't think, you know, we would be as serious either, but uh my understanding is last cycles, you have a goal, but if you don't make it, eh, you don't make it. Nice try. This, this cycle going forward is here's your goal. If you don't make it, there would be real consequences.
Commissioner Kim Carr, just bearing in mind the time, is is there a question embedded in there somewhere?
Yes, well, sorry. The question was, would you agree if if there wasn't the um, the penalty, you know, of cities not complying with the regional allocations that we may not have, you know, thought about tripling densities or um.
I I would offer, I believe the city's always been serious about helping produce affordable housing. Going back to uh bygone era now, back when the city had a redevelopment agency, the city camp was actually very successful in producing affordable housing units. With the dissolution of the RDA, the city kind of lost a lot of the tools and mechanisms which we had to help produce affordable housing. And the city's not, ultimately, we're not a developer and we can't ultimately control the actions of developers to build and include new units in our community. That said, it it definitely does come with a it it is, we are well aware and apparent eh that that there are additional consequences now for not achieving our plan for uh affordable housing units and needing arena allocations, among other things, SB thirty five provisions start to kick in. And um o- other laws do also apply at varying levels of, I I guess you could say how how well the city achieves its arena allocations. And in this most recent cycle, as part of Plan Bay Area twenty fifty allocations, they were using how well how effective cities were at achieving their regional housing needs allocation as a met- part of their methodology in unit assignment. How that will continue to play out in the future in the in the arena, say, seven cycle remains to be seen, but i- it's already being felt now. Thank you.
This goes a little bit outside of the the lanes or the guardrails here, but you 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 mentioned, um, Stephen, uh, put arose that we can't control developers. Um. And and that's true, but we had a item before us last year where we, I thought had a un- um a commission wide agreement that the in lieu fees are entirely inappropriate. And we would revisit that at the time of housing and general plan updates. So I feel like maybe it's not on this agenda, but as a question, how do we get those in lieu fees in line with twenty twenty three, twenty twenty five, twenty thirty standards? So a developer can't pay a thousand dollars and avoid pro- providing reasonable housing.
So the good news is it is on this agenda. Uh, so I I once uh commissioned stuff as questions and um you'll see there's uh serita policies and programs that speak to that.
I was just gonna say that I think we're we're going through all the objectives, right? So yeah, there's all that stuff in there where we'll have an opportunity to ask questions. And so I I don't really have any questions at this point since there's a lot of objectives.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good. Shall we go on to the next stage and bring up the meat? Or the meat alternative?
So we'll go through the objective policies and programs. Um, there are five objectives that we want to discuss with the plan commission. Um, and I'll go through various policies and programs that kind of align with each of these objectives. Um, this is not going to be an exhaustive list. This is really just a highlight to kind of get the planning commission warmed up. If there's anything you don't see on this list and want to discuss, for instance, the in lieu fees and instead of actually building housing, that's something that we can also add to the list, um, and we'll look into that as well. So the five objectives are to improve housing affordability in Campbell, to preserve existing housing and affordable housing stock, um, to remove governmental constraints to housing, um, to consider resilient housing policies and to address affirmatively furthering fair housing and addressing special needs groups. So the first um policy is to potentially modify Campbell's inclusionary ordinance. Um, it's at fifteen percent currently and one of the recommendations that um staff would like to, the plan commission to consider is to have maybe a fifty fifty split on low income versus and moderate income um within that fifteen percent. Um, another potential policy program is to establish um affordable housing impact fees um to be applied to non-residential development. So that's the um commercial linkage fees. Um, and that's a medium priority um set by the by staff. Um, another potential policy program is to improve housing affordability in Campbell. And that's through the um creation of an affordable housing overlay. And that can be done in combination with a variety of other things, um, with um incentives, um, with um transfer of development rights, um, with the objective design standards and so forth. Um, another potential policy and program is to regulate um housing unit size. Um, and part of that is to, if the commission wants to maintain the seventy five foot height limit, um, do we want, does the commission want to reduce the unit size to increase the density while keeping the overall volume? Um, that's something that um staff thinks um should be a high priority for the plan commission to consider um as well as the um affordable housing um overlay zone. Um, another one would be the use of city owned land. Um, and there's already two sites that have been identified. Um, another is the ADU ordinance updates. Um, and so one potential possibility is to incentivize deed restrictions for ADUs for lower income households. Um. And there's also the there's also the um the establishment of pre-approved ADU plans, and I believe that there's a countywide effort um here in Santa Clara County and then various other counties um are are doing um uh pre-approved ADU plans. So that's something that Campbell could easily um work with. Um, another one would be to provide certainty for housing developers um by allowing appropriate waivers for for the housing developments. Again, that can be combined with the affordable housing overlay zone and that could be um incentives related to fees. We can have like specific development standards um and so forth and so on. So we can have a con- we can have a conversation that talks about all of these um things in conjunction. Um, and we would list them out potentially as separate programs. Another possible program that we could develop is to have objective design standards like I talked about in conjunction with the um affordable housing overlay. Um, we can also develop missile, missing middle housing through SB ten, if that's something that the plan commission would like to recommend to the council. Um, right now, in terms of state law, it's it's an option. It's not a requirement like SB nine. Um, and so we'll transition to the next objective, which is to preserve existing housing and affordable housing stock. And I'll try to go through this quickly so that we can leave time for the planet commission to kind of discuss all of this. Um, one of them is to address rent control. Um, there's already a yearly cap based on AB fourteen eighty two, which is five percent um plus the cost of living up to ten percent. So
Can I get, um, is it possible for us to discuss like the first set, like each of these five sets one at a time as opposed to all five at once?
Yeah, can we, can we do that?
Yeah, so so this is uh a a very good point and uh Director Eastwood self exchanging some emails on this. Um. Yeah, there's a lot to go through. I'm just thinking you probably want Yeah, there's a lot to go through. I'm just thinking, we probably want to step through all of this because we still have to open up the public debate. Right. So I think we should probably get everything onto the table. So there could be public comment. But then we go back and then we can go through it one by one. With the emphasis on giving guidance on the priority, we're gonna be talking about this stuff forever.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we didn't.
I, I just want to make sure we get everything on the table so the public.
Yeah, I was gonna have the same question. So I'm glad we asked, but that's fine. Yeah, let's go through it. Okay.
All right. Thank, please, please continue. This is a very good presentation.
Yes, I just want to go through this quickly, just to go through it all for the, for the Plan Commission and for the public. And then we can go through and have a detailed discussion on each and every one of them. Preservation of mobile home parks. There's already state regulations, so I'm not sure that there's a whole lot that the city of Campbell needs to do on that. Short-term vacation rental ordinance. Currently, the city does not allow vacation rentals. And so if the city does decide to do that, then we'd be kind of balancing income that could potentially be garnered. But then I don't know if that income is really going to pay for the housing loss. That's going to be lost. So that's kind of a low priority for staff. Housing rehabilitation loan program. The city currently already work, refers eligible households to rebuilding together Silicon Valley. So that's also a very low priority. Workforce housing, allowing organizations to use tax-exempt bonds to acquire market rate apartment buildings and then converting them to affordable housing projects. That's a medium priority for staff. Removing government constraints to housing, modifying parking requirements that we've talked about. That's a high priority. Improving permit streamlining. So depending on how we want to do that, some of it is already in progress with SB thirty-five and the objective design standards are kind of already prioritized. Again, this can be used in conjunction with the affordable housing overlay zone. So I mean, it's, it's a low priority in terms of like an add-on, but it could be added to some of the other policies and programs that the Plan Commission may consider. Development impact fee adjustments for affordable housing. Currently, the only impact fee is for parks. And so that's a low priority at the moment. Resilient policies, citing development, establishing climate strategies to encourage resilient design. And then also on top of resilient design, having standards that encourage requiring resilient and efficient HVAC systems. These are also low priorities. And affirmatively furthering fair housing. This, I think, the Plan Commission may want to have some special attention on these sets of policies and programs. So the first one is to fulfill housing needs for special needs populations and workforce housing. I think we've talked about it and decided to make it more of a higher priority. And we came up with a number of potential sub-points that can be addressed, just to talk through all the special need pop, but population needs. Again, this is a very high-level list and we can go further and provide more potential policies and programs as, as we develop them. But a highlight would be to provide density bonus to support senior and special needs housing. Having special supportive senior slash senior overlay near, near amenities. So for example, if there's a development project within a half mile of amenity two, and then having a threshold of at least fifty units that we can provide us some sort of incentive, whether it's a density bonus or parking reductions or something like that. Developing a senior and disabled home rehabilitation program or to build off the existing rebuilding together Silicon Valley program. And deposit assistance for a special needs population. It applied as a grant up to fifty percent, up to a hundred percent of the first and last month's rent. So these are just a highlight of, of the ideas that we can address to support special need populations. Other affirmatively furthering fair housing issues can involve rental protections, ADU incentives for special needs populations, having outreach on here, on fair housing laws, having equity training. Equity training, we change from low to a medium priority, just because we wanted people to understand what equity is and also provide the tools and education materials that people may not even be aware of. And that could involve training across the city. It could be training to apartment rent managers. It could be just people who are looking for housing. So it, it could be very broad-based. And then lastly, just having multilingual information on housing programs. We also changed that to a medium priority. So do we want to go through the next steps, Rob, before we go back? Or do we want to open up the public comment or?
Well, I, I, I'd say we can stop there. This is a finishing slide, which you can come back to. But if you, at this point, at your discretion, like to take public testimony and then come back and we can go through these in detail with Commissioner deliberation and feedback.
Yeah, good, good job, especially this time of night. So I'd like to open it up to public comment. Would anybody like to speak? And thank you for your perseverance, staying until ten to eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim Sullivan, twelve sixty-three Chamberlain Court. So just a couple of things really quickly. A great presentation and Rob's done great work. I think I was part of one of the groups that provided some of the feedback. I just want to talk really quickly and that I'm a, a big proponent on either the commissioner or at the council level, having the discretion to charge an in-lu fee. And I'm not talking about like a thousand dollars per unit to get away from doing things, but there's certain housing units sometimes that are built even like a subdividing, you know, two thousand, three thousand square foot homes that, that could sell for two and a half, three million dollars. And to, to have somebody benefit from that on even a moderate income level, which might be able to buy it for five hundred dollars. I would love to see that fee be able to be charged to developer, maybe give the developer the option. And what the city can do with that money, I think, is leverage with some of the nonprofit builders out there and produce something that's, that's way greater than a single unit. I've seen this happen successfully in the city of Fremont, where they've leveraged seven and a half million dollars to the tune of creating, you know, seventy-five housing units that are at very low and low income. And that's one of the, one of the things that I think the city of Campbell really needs to strive for is that low and very low income range. The last thing that I wanted to, or the, my other comment that I wanted to bring up was the deed restrictions for the ADUs. I'm not sure where the city is or where the state is right now. But the last thing that I think that the city of Campbell wants to do is discourage ADU production, particularly of those ADUs by design are being counted for very low, low and moderate, which I think, you know, I had heard, you know, a couple of months ago. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Do we have anybody on?
Mr. Raja, would you like to speak?
Hi, can you folks hear me?
Yes, I can hear.
Quickly, you know, two years ago, I have advocated hard for ADU changes and treated lots of Campbell residents during the push for ADU changes. Any kind of deed restrictions for ADU, you know, the construction cost is like four hundred per square. Putting any deed restrictions will only discourage people from building these ADUs. So, you know, any kind of deed restrictions in general for building ADUs is, you know, should be discouraged. Also, you know, develop the missing marital ordinance SB ten is critical. You know, if you have seen the housing element, most of the plan is to develop for smaller units, like bigger complexes. I'm a hundred percent sure most of these complexes are going to be like apartment complexes and things like that. People who rent and then leave, like the whole plan, I didn't see much of a plan for like housing, right? Like it doesn't have to be big housing. If you see all the new single-family housing out there, these are like three floors, single-family homes. And that's the trend. People are okay with it. Considering there is no land out there to build this six thousand square feet lots, this is the way we have to go. So, you know, we're trying to create housing for people who wants to raise their kids in Campbell should be a priority unless BTAN will help with that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Raja. Is that the last comment? Or last request? Okay, at which point I'll close the public hearing. I believe there's one slide left on the pack. Do we want to review that or?
Sure. Get that out of the way and then get back to the meat of this. So this is just a highlight. I think I addressed this at the beginning. So tonight, I think it was the funnel, you're identifying higher priority housing policies and programs. We're going to do initial analysis. One thing I think staff is going to do, especially on the affordable housing and removing constraints is between this meeting, the council meeting, and the next wave actually do have more outreach with our market rate and affordable housing developers to get their feedback and bring that back for the second meeting. We had a stakeholder meeting with them and the fall was a really constructive. But based on the feedback we get from the commission and council, we'll present that and get some additional ideas from that group. Anyways, to summarize, your recommendations to go to council next week. We'll do the additional research engagement with stakeholders and then this will be back to you on May fourth. And again, as I mentioned, our target is to publish a draft housing knowledge by late May. And I think that's our last slide.
Okay, thank you. So, so I'll suggest a process and then everybody can shoot it down and we can do something different, right? So we've got lots of objectives and programs within those objectives. I think one of the outputs we need, and directories would correct me here, is a critical thing is we need to come back with prioritizations. So staff has recommended prioritizations on here. So what I'd suggest is that we start with the first objective. Go objective programs. I will look across the commission. You don't need to comment, but really just some, if you do, please, I'm not saying don't, but please keep it concise and to the point because of time. And if you disagree with the prioritization that's been suggested by the staff, then definitely come back with that and we'll see how that goes. Does, does, does that type of work for people?
If we have general thoughts on ways to achieve an objective that aren't specifically mentioned, will we have a place to mention that?
That's a good point. Let's go through the programs to achieve the objective, reach objective, save that thought and have it at the end.
Of each objective?
Of each objective.
That makes sense to me.
We'll forget it.
No worries. I have notes.
Yeah, we know. Good point. Good point. So the first, the first one. Improving housing affordability.
So I think it's over just for process. I think it's over two to three slides, but we weren't able to scan back and forth. If you want to open the topic, we can show the slides and then I would like to go commission by commissioner, feedback on the priority or, or thoughts around those.
Yeah, let's go, we'll go slide by slide. I'll just look across the line. Any comments or disagreements with the prioritizations? Speak up, please. Let me read that for a second.
I have a question. If I may, on the first item. So when, when you say fifteen percent BMR, that means if you build seven or more unit, one has to be BMR. Is that what you mean by fifteen percent?
The, the city's current inclusionary housing ordinance requires projects with ten or more units to deed restrict fifteen percent. So this would be providing additional clarity for how that allocation of low and moderate would occur and also providing in the second point, there's a discussion about scalability. So that in the report, we identify that there's this kind of a gap between, let's say, a project that has five going all up to nine, doesn't provide any obligation at all. So the city's experienced circumstances where a developer will propose nine, where they could otherwise have built ten in order to avoid the impact. So if you have some scaling fee, so you don't suddenly realize a sudden impact at ten. You pay something into the program at nine, it, it kind of spreads out the, the impact.
Thank you.
So assuming we've had a chance to digest.
My, my comment earlier about the in-lu fee, it's mentioned, but I think the, the calculation was, was off in our you know, a year ago deliberations. Is that something we're discussing here or?
We could absolutely raise it. It was, I believe it was the Mozart project had, which had paid an in-lu fee. It's uncommon because it's dealing with very low-density projects, but it would be something that we would need to study to establish a new, even scalable in Luffy, but any newly established in Luffy for projects that pay out in general.
I mean, it could be handled by city council. I didn't, not saying I'm even prepared to discuss what that number is, but it, it has to be done. It was inadequate.
I would, I would broadly negate that this item would be the one that takes care of that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, so I guess today, I have no feeling you need to go all the way down the road to the end here. It's, it's more, it's more. So number one, you know, what can we do to improve for housing for billing Campbell? Two, we have an inclusion housing ordinance. Three, can we modify it in some broad ways to improve, improve affordability? So three thoughts there. One is, as staff mentioned, you know, be very specific about the income types of the units proposed. Two is, as Stephen mentioned, it is, it is pretty standard. Actually, I have a lower threshold. A lot of jurisdictions start at three or five. You have to go in inclusionary housing ordinance and typically you pay fees until you get to a certain threshold. So staff's recommendation is really to consider a lower threshold. It would generate fees into the program as the speaker met earlier. We can use that money to partner with affordable housing developers and develop units. And last thought, you know, really to look at the fee and the nexus. No, no, no matter what, coming out of this, we're going to have to hire a consultant to do what's called a nexus study. They would have to do an exact calculation of the fee and is it proportionate to the housing type? And do we have the nexus to charge that fee to use it to pay for housing production? So, so we will have to do a nexus study that will get into the details that you had mentioned, Commissioner Rivlin.
So, so for, so Stephen, I just want to make sure I understand your recommendation, staff recommendation correctly. Units should be fifty percent low income, fifty percent moderate. You don't mean one out of every two houses should be low income. You mean, once you pass the threshold, then this kicks in.
Correct. So right now, the, the ordinance lacks clarity. It indicates that of the units which are provided, that, that low and moderate units should be provided, shall be provided. It doesn't indicate the exact mix or percentage. We're actually recommending specific, being a little bit more specific in the ordinance, exactly how the allocation would occur.
So, so just to be clear, you're talking about if, if you build a hundred units and, and we're going to get fifteen affordables out of it, then it's going to be seven, eight, or eight, seven, or whatever, right? That's what you're talking about.
Correct.
If I can have a comment on item B, I'm really hesitant to, to push this, especially if we can adjust our zoning to make it so we need less subsidy money for each BMR unit. The high cost of real estate also hits commercial space. And given that we're looking to grow our job base over the next eight or twenty years as well, I'd, I'd be really hesitant to essentially increase the cost of commercial space.
I, I would, I would support that view as well. I think it's a bit of a stealth tax. I I I would have, I would support that view as well. I think it's a bit of a stealth tax. Um, it's effectively moving the cost, um. Onto commercial developers. I think if there's needs to be additional money, let's be honest with it, right? Um, it should be. A tax whether we like it or not, but it shouldn't be, um, I I'm sorry, it shouldn't be. I would not be in favor of this because I think it is a back, backdoor tax. Any other comments?
I'll just, I'll just chime in very quickly. I I am all in support of what the this staff's. A on on the A items, I think we should lower the inclusionary ordinance, probably to five units or something. And I like to fifty fifty percent because we got to get the very low and we got to kind of force the issue there. So I think those are, those are really good ideas. And then on the B item, if the commercial linkage fees, I I I think they gave it a medium priority. So yeah, I don't, I don't think it's crucial. It probably might be a distraction in terms of commercial. So that's not such a big deal. Thanks.
So with those comments, do we feel comfortable with the rest of the wording and the prioritization as proposed? Thank you. Could we move on to the next one, please?
I guess if you have any further questions on clarifying what these mean, more than happy to provide, um, more background on these before you weigh in on your thoughts on them.
So, as I understand it, an affordable housing overlay zone is an area where you get looser zoning if you're doing affordable projects. How does this differ from what SB thirty-five and density bonus already let you do?
Well, those are very good questions. Uh, so SB SB thirty-five, uh, across the board. Uh, and Campbell, of course, is subject to it because we haven't met our arena, uh, allows a streamlined process if you provide a certain affordable housing project. And I think you asked about density bonus. Similarly, under state law, if you provide, provide a certain number of affordable units, you get concessions, waivers and increased density. The advantage of an affordable housing way, housing overlay zone is the city can designate certain areas where it would really like affordable housing. Uh, instead of would offer these up as concessions and waivers out the gate. Oftentimes, I'm not saying Campbell is, but many cities have, anyone can avail themselves of dense, state density bonus law. Concessions and waivers, but if it, if a city offers favorably that they would. Offering certain increases in density, massing parking restriction or parking reductions out the gate. It prevents a much more favorable and certain environment to a developer, even regardless of SB thirty-five and density, state density bonus law. It sort of lays out that they would like a developer to come in and produce a certain number of affordable units and they are guaranteed. To get these concessions and waivers. So it, I think it just provides a lot more certainty, number one. And number two, the city can designate certain areas where they are trying to aid, have the market more concentrated for affordable housing developers. Oftentimes, market rate developers will gobble up properties ahead of those affordable housing developers. So it. Tailors the market a bit more so affordable housing developers can come in. And again, if there's areas where the city would like to see higher density, we've heard comments from city council on areas where they'd like to see. Greater heights versus less, you can use the affordable housing overlay zone to to designate those areas.
Um, in addition, affordable housing developers don't necessarily want to maximize state density bonuses because they want to have. A collegial relationship with the city, especially if there's funding involved. And so having an affordable housing overlay makes it much more easier for them to. You know what the, know what the rules are for the site and then also feel more comfortable pursuing, um, the increased incentives and development standards.
Yeah, I don't want to, oh, I'm sorry. I should put, I thought that was really a good question because I had the same thing and I, and I'm, I'm still wondering. I don't want to beat. Dead horse here. I need to go for it. We talked probably for three hours about the affordable housing overlay zone. But it does seem like SB thirty-five, SB ten has kind of taken away. Some of the incentive or need for that sort of thing. But I, so I did some quick research online and the Turner Center did a big study on it, which is kind of interesting, the famous SB nine study people. But also I saw that the city of Los Gatos actually put one in in twenty thirteen. Did you, have you checked into how they've done with their? Affordable housing overlay zone?
Um, I'm not as familiar with Los Gatos. I am more familiar with Menlo Park. They do also have an affordable housing overlay zone and it hasn't been very successful. So we're reevaluating that.
But you, but you think that it can be a pretty good tool and obviously.
It it can be. Um, part of what we were doing with with Menlo Park is, you know, we've met with affordable housing developers. And they've explained some of the things that would make it much more easier for them to develop.
Do we have some areas of Campbell where we're thinking of? Focusing our affordable housing overlay zones?
Yeah, and I think initial thoughts, and again, subject to further evaluation and feedback. I mean, there's definitely areas of this city where we designate higher densities near transit. And there's less interface with the residential zones, which has been, um. An issue with, um, to Commissioner Buckbender's point, folks having feedback on, you know, too much massing. So on our initial review areas like the Frye's side, the Prune Yard side around our light rail stations, I think would be prime areas. Where we are concentrating density, uh, would like a lot more affordable units and we can offer a suite of in session. Incentives to get more affordable out of those areas. I think it's those areas we'd start to look at.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a question on the, on this zone. So we, you know, the number in the arena is pretty large for the affordable housing, it's whatever. Almost half of the half of the twenty nine hundred. So. If if we're going to create zones, I I would like to think that we're going to create. Pick zones and where we can meet. The numbers, right? Where we're not going to limit ourselves such that not enough affordable housing is going to get built. So it it would that be the, uh, the goal is to pick enough. Areas that we stipulate, uh, such that the numbers will come out. Uh, if we were to fulfill, you know, be able to fulfill those. You know what I'm saying is like, if the number is, we got to, we're supposed to have fourteen hundred units. From the twenty nine, whatever it is, fourteen, fifteen hundred units. And we need enough. Zone locations, affordable housing zone locations to accommodate that. We probably need to go beyond that, right? Uh, we have the parcels stipulated. And we, we know how many units maybe there will be on those parcels. So I would assume that. That if we establish these zones, that we're going to do it in accommodation of the arena. Inventory. Make sure that we're covered.
Well, there's two, two approaches to this and there's a couple of case studies. One is Menlo Park, Corte Madera has done this. I'm aware of the Los Gatos. Situation, but I think that had a different purpose. Um, one is you, is you provide, you provide a suite of incentives. And so you're not mandating affordable development, uh, but if they do provide more, uh, BMR units, you get a, a ton of concessions and waivers out the gate. Um, so you could do a calculation, but it's not mandated. They provide those number of units. It'd be qualified. Uh, how I see it done in Corte Madera is they, it's definitely approach. They take industrial zones and basically say only industrial developments allowed. However, if you come in with a, um, housing project, it has to be a hundred percent affordable. So there's sort of a mandate, um, that if there's a conversion. Uh, to residential, it is a hundred percent affordable project. I I think in staff's perspective, what we're thinking, because we don't have a lot of those situations. On our housing opportunity sites is more of the former of using the incentives. So we could do a preliminary calculation, but it. It would be a little difficult to say that's a guarantee on the number of units that would come out.
Thank you. With the prioritization, any other comments before we move on?
Um, I had a question on, on D. Are we trying to make the unit sizes smaller or larger? Well, getting to the, the, the intent, it it is to try to address affordability issues. So the idea would be that you would. Provide limitations on the maximum average unit size, the intent of bringing down overall affordability, consistent with this. This objective, which is improving affordable, housing affordability in Campbell. Okay, so I understand that if we want the units to be smaller, um, that's kind of, there's kind of a natural tendency to that, right? Because if you have two thousand square feet, you'll be able to lease it out for more if you have two one thousand square foot apartments and one two thousand square foot apartment. Um, so the only reason why people would do that is because we have density limits as opposed to like building volume limits. But I, I feel like we could just. Trying to think of a different way of saying this and stop shooting ourselves in the foot, but like this seems to be a consequence of our own rules. We could just stop doing that as an idea.
Sorry, I, I have to chime in here. Um. Not that I disagree with my fellow commissioner, I don't, but. We also have to keep the bigger picture in mind is the character of Campbell, you know, what do we want our town to be? Um. If we, you know, instead of having to limit. How big the units are going to be, to allow the market forces to. Play that out if, if they want to put bigger units but less units because somehow they've identified that's going to be their target market. I think we should, we should work with that, you know, so, um. Sometimes more unit may not be the answer because. Um, as I had said, I'm a civil engineer. I get a client that says, me and my brother have not just bought this property. It's going to have two units in it. We both are going to live in there and it's like, oh, that was smart. Individually, they couldn't afford it, but together they can. And so same thing can be happening in units. It may not be different units. It would be one unit with four bedrooms, but. Four people can be living there. So we're still housing the same number of people. But instead of in several units, we're housing them in one unit, you know, and so if the market forces. Say that works, then so be it.
Yeah, it's a good, good comment. And what I would say is evaluate, right? It's not saying do, they're looking, they're proposing to look at it. Okay, so there's pros and cons in this. I think the intent is they're making massive, so people can't afford them. What's the optimal size? And they're rating that's a high priority to look at.
I understand.
Okay, could we step onto the next one, please?
Question on this size thing. So that would apply to all. Both market rate and affordable housing or just affordable housing?
A-again, I think at this stage we'd just be evaluating it. I I think that when this is drafted, as you're seeing, it was also intended to address. Council concerns of exceeding the city's maximum height limit. So it would generally be applied to higher density projects. Those approaching the seventy-five unit to the acre standard, and it would be intended to prevent you from having very large. Three thousand, say, square foot average unit sizes within a seventy-five foot tall building and then really breaching the city height limit. So by bringing down the average maximum unit size, you'd help achieve that, that objective as well.
Right, next one, please.
So while the commission's looking at that, we, we have included, as mentioned on the screen, two publicly owned sites in the, um. Housing opportunity sites and we're continuing to evaluate those. I'm not sure if the commission has further feedback on those and again, on the second one, uh, staff does consider this a low priority. Um, partly because it's some of the concerns you heard from one of the public speakers.
I I would say that the first point came up a few meetings ago to your point. And the ADU might be very reluctant to really open that one up, considering the amount of effort was put into that. Eighteen months ago. Be my comments. So I'd agree with the, the comments in prioritization.
Um, I know this is part of our, I think this is part of our work plan for this year. Does this include the idea of, um. Increasing the scope of non-conforming ADUs that we could legitimize?
That is still on the work plan, yes.
Okay, so that's before any of this happens.
Correct.
Cool.
Just real quick. Uh, on this, you've put this as a low priority, ADU ordinance updates. I mean, it seems to me if there's a way to incentivize. For ADUs to be used for lower income households or or true affordability. I mean, my, my, my concern about ADUs is that, you know. People are going to put an ADU in your backyard and use this as home office. Or, or get a market rate rent out of it. Um, uh, I'd, I'd love to be able to see a way for the city to incentivize or. ADU use for truly low income affordable housing. So I I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that being a low priority, but I might be. An outlier here, I don't know.
It's a, it's a good point. Um, I'm just remembering the, the months, if not. Years we went through the ADU stuff. So I'm not saying it's not valid, right? Uh, he's, you open up a can of worms when you do that. So, um, that's what I, I caution.
You know, my question about priorities is, you know, no offense to the staff, but when you put a little priority on anything, it ends up being. No priority to a great extent. It's like, we'll be talking about it eight years from now. So that's my concern about low priorities in general is that if it's a good idea, you know, maybe we should be having it so prior.
Um, in the spirit of lower government, um, regulations, I actually like the low priority because. That's just one more regulation that you're putting on private property and. I I really believe the incentive to build ADUs will suffer if they know. You know, there's, there's going to be a deed restriction on there. That's. I, that's my experience, you know?
I would agree with that in that, um, you know, the, the surveys that the county does saying that. A certain proportion of them are being rented out at below market rates, even though. They're largely, you know, not deed restricted. I I don't think we should mess with that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, should we move on to the next one, please?
I'm very much in favor of, uh. G, um, I think pre-approved ADU plans like really lower the bar for people getting involved. So very, very much a fan of that and. Um, so maybe jumping ahead, but, um. If we're talking about doing ADUs for special needs populations, we could have pre-approved, uh, depending on what that entails. If they need to be accessible for people with mobility impairments, we have pre-approved plans. For ADUs that are accessible to people with mobility impairments because a lot of the times people. Build ADUs so that parents can age, you know, in their backyard, that kind of thing.
I don't know if it helps, but to give a little more color, there's, I'm not sure if the commission is where we have a housing collaborative where, um. Campbell, fifteen other cities, the county together share housing consultant. Uh, money has been put in by a bag and and there's a technical resource to all the cities on their housing elements. But the thought with this, I've been pushing, is if all the cities together in the county had a collective suite of policies and programs that they share their resources and develop together. It shows we're prioritizing these things. So the thought on number one is we're going to use our collective, um, housing consultant to develop these ADU plans. And you'd go to any jurisdiction in the county, go to Los Gatos, Campbell, uh, San Jose, and you could use these pre-approved plans. And get your AD, AD built anywhere in this valley. So that's a little more thought on the approach.
Yeah, I I think it's a great idea because you also get the potential, um, savings on volumes. If you, you go to one builder. They could, you know, if you, if you're ordering more ADUs, then you should get the economics of scale. Um, potentially better quality, actually.
Do, doesn't San Jose already do this at some level? So wouldn't it just be a copy or wouldn't it? Not a copy, but couldn't we just partner through that resource and?
Yes, you, you burst our bubble of being innovative from the start, but the, the idea was to take the, uh, the San Jose example and build from it. But yes, as soon as they already has this program, we would use that as a template and pattern it out across the valley.
I'm nodding for the record. That makes sense.
There are some ADU builders that actually have state approved plans, you know, and so you just use those state approved plans. Anywhere, you know, anytime.
And I, I'm in support of H as well, identifying. Um. Waivers. Um, at least coming up with a list so we could review. You know, there's always that balance of not losing control where control is necessary. It's, um, identifying things to just simplify things without, you know, unloading up on process. Uh, would be a, a good thing.
Um. Am I right in understanding that the waivers, given that our only like impact fee is.
Am I right in understanding that the waivers, given that our only like impact fee is the park fee, that our waivers are going to be more waivers for development requirements or review standards or like planning fees, that sort of thing?
It could include those, but also building permit fees could also be considered to be reduced or waived as well.
That makes sense.
Finish with this one?
If the plan commission would like to discuss what types of fees they would be interested, or do you want us to look at all the different fees and kind of do an initial analysis? If there's any development standards you want us to look at or to reconsider, that would be helpful as well.
I think I would lean towards just fewer reviews and a more certain process. My understanding is that affordable housing frequently involves the sort of house of cards of funding and any delays can absolutely scuttle the project. So if we can have like, oh, you'll get this done in 15 days and this next step done in 15 days kind of thing, like I think that would be a really, really good incentive.
In my mind, and this could be the wrong, so it's a good question. If the, if the answer came out, well, it would be an automatic waiver under certain conditions for in Lufi's or park fees without a review, I would feel very uncomfortable about that because that impacts things like open spaces, right? If you're not getting money for the park, you're not going to get open spaces, right? But if there was more mechanical processes or or smaller items which goes ministerial review or or some simplification of process which weren't so significant or impactful on other things that we've been discussing tonight and, you know, general plan for the, for the city, then I would welcome that. Step on to the next one, please.
So I have a broader comment on the idea of missing middle. I think an SB 10 ordinance is a really great idea. But more broadly, like it might be worthwhile considering why missing middle is illegal, even where it's supposedly legal. Like we have zones which say, hey, you should be able to build a townhouse here, but you can't build a townhouse. So one of the things I've been doing is if you go to missingmiddlehousing.org, they have idealized forms of, you know, the townhouse, the side by side duplex, the stacked duplex, you know, all the classical forms, and you can go and find your local zone in which that should be buildable and you can list the ways in which it's actually not legal to do so. We could audit that and say like, this is how you legalize townhouses. This is how you legalize, you know, duplexes in an RD zone of like the the standard canonical type. I think that would be like I think that would be a very powerful thing to update missing middle. I, I previously did that with our zoning code. It's mostly parking. Sometimes setbacks or lot sizes, but mostly parking.
I agree with those recommendations up on the, on the slide. Any issues? Any questions, comments on that?
Yeah.
I, I, I just kind of have a question about this missing middle housing. I'm not, I'm not really clear. I think there was something about, you know, San Tomas area is like, we're talking about parcels where they would normally be single family housing and putting a higher density in those areas or are we still, are we talking about? I'm not sure. I'm not clear on what it is, what it would be.
That's a great question. So this did come up when we were talking about housing opportunity sites and as you'll remember, weren't a lot of sites picked in the San Tomas area and staff had offered SB 10 as a way to come back to that. My understanding that, and this is, this was a legislation proposed by Senator Weiner adopting the law. It just allows jurisdictions to adopt an ordinance where they can probably have a set of criteria. First, we'd have to go into criteria. What's the size of the property? What's the zoning and certain other aspects? And if you meet that criteria, you could do up to 10 units per parcel. And to Commissioner Buckbinder's point, you know, it's beyond a single family home. At that point, you're usually into admin duplexes, townhomes, based on the size of the property. So I think there's a lot of flexibility. We'd have to sketch out both the criteria and the, the density. But the intent is, is probably for those sites where we haven't designated the 45, 60, 75 dwellings per acre. Probably more towards single family neighborhoods if, to allow a little higher density in those areas than otherwise would be allowed.
The, I, I just hand waved this. There's no consensus about this, but the idea was like along, say, hacienda, you would have like townhouse density along the, the street, which is like a major thoroughfare through San Tomas. It's like not particularly taller than everything in San Tomas, but it's considerably denser and it's facing the main road, that kind of thing.
No other comment? Can we move on to the next one?
Can we talk about goal one in general?
Are we on to, oh, two, well done, well spotted. Yeah, she wanted to raise additional points.
Yeah, so the two things I wanted to note, like first, I was very surprised at this, but we apparently have a worked example. It's not worked, it's proposed, but presumably a worked example about how to make affordable housing, doesn't require subsidies and Lufi's or anything like that. You have low and low parking, you make it tall and you build a modular. Ideally, that would work, but, but we, we have a proposal for that and I was kind of flabbergasted in that there's no reason we, we couldn't have buildings like that all through downtown or all through wherever else and we wouldn't have to all, all the other options involve making some kind of trade off. You know, you make it harder to build office space, you make it harder to build single family homes. You do something else. And this is saying where you don't need to find some source of funding for it. So I feel like we should ask the developer, like, how exactly are you doing this? And can we like publish this as a toolkit or something? Assuming that that will actually work when, when he tries it. And I don't know if this fits under here, but do we have or should we have a goal that say market rate housing should be affordable to someone making 80% of AMI? Or that less than X percent of renters should be rent burden, like some kind of metric like that to determine like, are we doing well? Like, is the housing situation here, the housing affordability situation getting better? I know we don't have direct control over that, but we should at least like look at where the rubber meets the road. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. My formal objectives and and it's half past eleven, right? So let's, let's push on.
Sure about the rent control thing. So you know, I don't know about a stricter rent control. Well, you know, we, you know, half, half the people in Campbell rent. So and, and, and rent increasing in Campbell's real problem. So I, I'm not sure I'd be opposed to stronger rent controls, but, but specific to affordable housing, I have a question. Once you've got, you got a hundred percent affordable housing or even ones that are just the blue market rate housing, how does rent increases, how does, does that work for somebody who's in an affordable housing unit? How do the rent, do they, do they, is there a rent increases based on, you know, inflation or whatever? How does that work?
So locally, Santa Clara County posts average median income limits, which establish the maximum percentage of a household income that can be allocated towards rent and that helps determine how much, I guess, what the rent would be for that unit in a given year.
Yeah. So, so you're saying as the median income goes up, they can adjust the rent accordingly?
That's correct. It's not like locked in time. It does go up each year.
So having recently been somewhat recently been a renter and having gone to the tried to get help from the city about when my rent went way, way up and getting no help from the city. This was just before AB 1482. I would strongly, I would not endorse like having more rent control or like rent control on new buildings or something like that, but I would really encourage having rent control, sorry, having AB 1482 protections apply to shorter term tenants. Those are people who are in more precarious positions and therefore more vulnerable to rent hikes. They shouldn't be left out. That's my opinion on that.
Okay. I'm, I'm not in favor of rent controls. I'm not a landlord, so I don't have a vested interest, but I know people who are actively not investing in properties because they can't get a return. You know, at the end of the day, you have a sum of money, you choose to where to invest it. If somebody is controlling that return of investment, then people will invest it elsewhere.
Are you talking about like because of AB 1482 protections, which are?
Rent control.
Okay, so ju- just to be clear, AB 1482 is, I believe, like the rent can go up by five percent plus CPI every year. And a certain amount every two years, like it's, it's, it's basically anti-rent gouging. Like the, the situation I was in where it didn't apply was my rent went up by, I think, 36% in 18 months, which was bananas. It, it, and it only applies to buildings over a certain age. Like it's, it's as rent control goes, it's a very light touch. Like I'm generally not in favor of rent control. But if the state already applies it to people who are long-term tenants, we should extend that to short-term tenants, I believe.
Can we move on to the next one?
So I looked on airbnb.com a little earlier and I found 10 places in Campbell I could stay at this weekend. So in short, the rentals are happening, the city just isn't collecting any income from them. I don't know if legalizing it would make a lot more of them happen and that might take more housing off of the proper rental market. But it's like, I don't know if we don't have the resources for it, but we're definitely not enforcing that you can't use, you can't Airbnb out your backyard.
I'd only comment, it's not legal and I confirm with you that it hasn't been high on the priority list. We respond to complaints and folks are complaining about the short-term vacation rental or a code enforcement officer won't go out and verify.
I don't have anything to add on this. I think we're good to, to move on to the next one, please.
I'm offering this is a, two things. One is this is a newer program. Two, since publication of the staff report, I'm going to offer Stephen a bit more as a resource. He's done a lot more research into it. And three, I do know we have a stakeholder that has approached the city. They're actually looking at a, a project in the near term. It requires authorization, the city adopt a resolution to allow them to go forward. So when this does go to council, if the council's favorable with this, the next steps actually could be to move forward in a, in a shorter term versus put it in a housing policy and program. But I will offer beyond the staff report, if you have additional questions on how these programs work, they're kind of new, have a lot of innovative approaches to financing. I'll offer Stephen as a resource. He's done a lot more research into this.
It seems like it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, if I'm not mistaken, this is very much like how the RDAs used to work, where you will take current property tax payments, you freeze it. And then the extra that comes along, that goes to the developer to to be able to make something like this happen, you know, and the, the city, if I'm not mistaken, ends up not losing any money. But it makes the project probably affordable for the developer, you know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure as to the exact thing, but from what I'm thinking, this is how RDAs used to work and it's great. I wish we could move that to a higher priority. If that's the case.
It is a little bit distinct. What I would offer is, I mean, broad picture. These groups, what they do is they buy market rate housing products, like apartment buildings in the community, and they're pretty much exempt from local property taxes. The city goes into an agreement with them and it gets exempted. So the RDA functioned a little bit differently. The, the city would actually be the beneficiary of the increase in property tax of those properties realized to the delta. So this be an elimination of the property tax which would have, does have ramifications on revenues to the city. It can be offset potentially in certain programs. It also has impacts to school districts in the county as well, for, for example.
But they limit the, I'm sorry, but they limit the rent that the occupants will pay. And that's
That's correct.
Yeah, that's great.
So this sounds like the muni bonds style, it says tax exempt bonds.
Yes, there's different ways it's being financed. So one factor is that they are receiving a tax exemption on the property, but then also it's being funded through tax, through bonds. So if you were to say invest in, in this type of program, you would be, say, in receiving, say, five, six percent return on your investment. And that investment itself would also be tax exempt. So those are tax exempt bonds to the, the investors, which also help, you know, prop up the program.
Yeah. So my, my one concern about this, this model is the property becoming tax exempt and that undercutting the city's tax base. Are BMR units generally tax exempt?
They're not tax exempt, but they're tax reduced given their, their, their value. So a, a unit, as previously stated, that might be otherwise sold for $2.5 million might only be, have a mark, have a taxable value of $200,000.
Okay.
If I may, so the, the, the report says rents levels are lowered almost like 35%. So this is like a house that's ready to go that, you know, occupants can just move into and then they pay lower taxes rather than having to go through the development process, the entitlement process, the construction and, you know, development of BMRs or lower or affordable housing. So has a huge advantage over our traditional way of making affordable housing or BMRs, correct?
That's correct. The 35% and how it's calculated is a little bit complicated in these financing models, but that, that is the concept, that they'd be taking existing market rate housing stock and converting it to make it affordable, at least a percentage of it.
That's great.
Okay. Suggest we move on. We still got a lot to do and it's coming up to quarter to 12.
This is a subject even dear to my heart. So I think we're going to come up with some like more specifics later, like say substitute car sharing spaces at some ratio for standard parking spaces, substitute bike spaces, establish parking maximums of a certain radius of light rail, that kind of thing. Maybe allow unbundling of parking in multifamily housing so that, you know, you rent an apartment and if you want to pay for it, you can rent a parking space kind of thing?
Yeah. I think it's a terrible idea. I'm really against it. So I may have thought a lot about this.
One thought on this parking thing, I'm, I'm agreeable to reducing parking near mass transit, but you know, because we had this thing that came up with the seven story building with zero parking, made me think a little bit, it's like maybe it's a little bit crazy idea, but it's like, you know, we have a lot of parking lots that I, I believe are underutilized. And would seem to me worthwhile to do an investigation to determine how underutilized they are if they are. Let's say, for example, the Second Street Garage, First Street Garage, I, I live near the Heritage Village offices. There's a lot of empty spot parking that could be used as permit, you know, that we, we reserved for housing that gets put up nearby. Okay. If in fact they are underutilized, that would require to investigate, you know, investigate those kind of parking lots. I mean, you could say the same thing about Campbell Plaza. You put up a housing unit and on the VTA site, it's like, well, you know, I drive by Campbell Plaza all the time, most of the parking lot's empty. So it's like there's going to be parking that's going to be necessary, I believe, that when we put up these units, there's going to be a, a, a parking problem. And so it's just, it's just the thought that, you know, we could look And so, uh, it's just, it's just a thought that, you know, we could look at places where, uh, parking lots aren't being used that are full of us. And maybe, you know, the, the complex is a deal with the private owner or, or further with the city, in the case of public garages, where they reserve a certain number of spaces for that project.
I think we've gotten some kind of, um, fee from some developer or something to have. You know, if you go to Santana Row, they have those signs on the outside of the building saying there's two hundred and seventy-one parking spaces and there's like fifteen on this layer. And, and, and all that, I thought we were gonna get one of those for some of our garages at some point.
There was an impact fee or payment from the OPA complex to fund some signage and wayfinding and measurements. I don't know if staff has details.
That's correct. I believe it's still on the work plan at Public Works, um, uh, to put in sort of wayfinding, to find wayfinding signs and those things using those fees.
Really short on time, but there are technologies out there at a very affordable cost that you put a puck on every stall. Um, and then you can have analytics prepared, so the city could look to that or private landowners could study. You said Heritage Plaza, check all those stalls, only ten percent are used. Why wouldn't they lease back to another user? So I think there are creative ways, um, anyway.
Every city's, you know, studying this, this issue, right? And it's parking is just such a, such a bear. But the one, one type of project that's becoming popular is a, 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 a project where you can choose to rent a, a parking or not. Maybe you don't have a car, maybe you don't have a car, I don't plan on it, so you'll get a, a, a unit and your rent will be a lot lower. And somebody who has a car will say, well, okay, I need, I need the parking spot. So I don't know if that would work in Campbell, but I know some of the big cities are doing that and, uh, the whole, one of the big parts for this whole thing is really trying to get buy-in from everybody. And I think the education has worked over the last eight years. I think a lot more people are aware that we need more below market rate housing, really desperately need it. People know that, but then when you come into the parking question, that's, that's where the problem comes in. So anything that we can come up with to work on that issue is gravy.
Thank you. On the next one. Oh, I'm terribly really sorry to do this. I didn't catch that B was on the last one. The only thing I wanted to mention is it might be nice to set a metric for something like eighty-five percent of housing being approved by right, like something concrete for permit streamlining. Anyway, on to C.
I, I agree, that's low priority, it's gonna impact any fee we've got is part of public parks. So I think I completely agree, it's low, in my mind, it's low, low priority. Okay.
Do we have high hazard areas in the first place?
We don't have any fire hazard areas identified in the city. There are technically areas of geotechnical, like fault areas in the city and areas that are of flood hazard. But that, that's really the extent of it, it's very limited.
I would be interested in seeing the siding development, a little bit higher priority. Uh, that's where we give incentives to developers to, um, you know, use the green standards and use the lead or whatever, green building designs. Into the, for example, that, uh, that water conservative houses, you know, where doesn't use as much water or, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I, I would, I'd like to see that medium because you, you can have energy savings through better insulation and water saving per. And cause comments.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is part of A or B, but I, I'm very interested in the idea of encouraging heat pumps instead of furnaces. I just learned about this, apparently you can, like even if you're switching from gas to electric, it pays for itself in like four years. I do want to make sure we're on the right side of encouraging things versus requiring things. If we put a lot of unfunded mandates on people's new houses, that could backfire. But this all seems like a, a good idea and sign that people may not be that aware of. Um, like going, you know, in the long run, maybe we'll wind up having a moratorium on new gas hookups or something like that. But that's more of a climate action plan thing.
You know, you're not, never mind, I'm not gonna get, but I, what, is it, isn't there, are there requirements that, that new housing have, have solar? Energy component, isn't that, isn't that being mandated or coming into play real soon?
One city did that, I think.
I, I actually believe with the new building code, it is being mandated, uh, you have to provide solar panels.
That's a great idea.
I don't, I don't know if the panels themselves are required, but I think it has to be pre-wired.
Pre-wired.
That's correct.
That's correct, it's pre-wired.
That sounds. So it's, it's a plug and play setting now. You don't have to have a electrician rewire your whole house and get you a new panel. You just drop the, the cells on the roof or on your lawn or wherever you're putting.
Okay. On to the next one.
So, um, for this, uh, sign that might help is to, there's this concept of a state of housing emergency, which would make it much, much easier to permit shelters. I have been told by the city council that this is politically impossible, but, um, solving problems may be politically impossible. We could set a goal of solving homelessness or producing as many shelter beds as we have homeless people as of right now. I do like the idea of a, of going beyond the state density bonus ideas to, you know, have a special kind of density bonus for, um, particular populations. I will just mention that our largest senior housing project is Wesley Manor, which is currently illegal to build. Um, wonder why we don't have these things, it's because we made it so we can't have them anymore. It's probably way out of scope, but maybe we should revisit the seventy-five foot height limit thing. Obviously, that would have to be a, a referendum and all, but maybe it's, it's worth revisiting.
I, I would say that the homeless part, I understand that, I say and agree, but I understand the, the politics behind it. But I think the special needs population extends beyond that, um, which I'm sure you, you, you include. So I, I, I think this is moving it from medium to high because you have, you know, multiple special needs cases from, you know, physical through to mental, um, special needs. So, um, and a lot of those where you can have type of association housing and group housing where, uh, people with special needs have, have support in a certain, you know, in a, in a community and ha- having housing built in that style, I think would be valuable.
And I'll just recap and mention, um, getting pre-approved ADU designs for particular people with particular impairments, especially mobility impairments. May make it a lot easier to put those in people's backyards and we might get a lot of them that way.
So question, so is ADA and it's a autistic issues, is that included in here? Or this is more of a homelessness and, you know, unhoused type of an issue we're talking about?
It, it can include, um, people with autism, if that's something that you wanted us to look at. So part of what we're looking at is not just people with disabilities, but people with developmental disabilities.
Okay.
That was my understanding, it's a broad coverage, it's not, you know, segregating one group. It's homeless, physical, mental disabilities, special needs. That's, that was my understanding, it sounds like that's what you, you understand by that term.
Yes. How about, how about the age, how about for like the elderly, you know, is that included in this?
Yes, seniors are special.
Okay. Yeah, I've written a report where I identify that whole list, but in addition to that, like female-headed households, senior populations, et cetera.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
So just, just to be clear, you, you're talking about incentivizing, say, for example, you know, there's senior group homes. You know, I, my mother was, my mother was in a group home for a while, you know, there's maximum six, you know, in what's, looks like a residential home. And then there's also group homes for people with disabilities. Are we talking about incentivizing those kinds of situations? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, yes, if that's what the planning commission would like us to consider.
Something to me.
Thank you. I'll step onto the next one.
But these are just some of the ideas for special needs populations. I, I think we can move to the next slide. I think I've already given all my opinions on these. So in order to do outreach on fair housing, um, maybe do outreach events to people who don't usually know about this stuff, partner with churches or workplaces. Also having, providing some basic level of advocacy, advocacy for people, even if it's not legal aid. Uh, just providing somebody like assistance to walk through the process for people who want to dispute their rent or people who are being taken advantage of. I think that would be, um, really significant.
Any, any other comments?
I mean, these are altruistic and great ideas, but how, how do we verify that they're being utilized? Is there a, like an annual report that says one person used this program or six thousand people use this program? Like, what's the, what's the benchmark of success? Printing flyers might help, but how do we know people are reading them?
That's a really, really good point.
I, I can offer through our existing contract on the first point, uh, outreach and education. Project Sentinel, um, does do, uh, monthly reports, which are then aggregated into quarterly reports, which indicate the impact and how many calls for service they get. And they do provide pretty detailed logs of who's calling and for what reason. And they are providing some of that advocacy support that we're talking about. So they do help represent renters who are running into difficulties with their property owners and trying to, uh, identify, identify solutions for common problems like plumbing or, you know, habitation issues. As to measuring success, that'd be almost something that the planning commissioner council would also help us gauge.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think they're great, but maybe there's a sub-comment in one of these that there should be a annual summary presented to city council or copied to the commission. Cause, you know, like I said, could print or offer it, but if it's not being used, then it's a waste of resources.
And I think that's a very good comment because the conversations, um, I've had with, um, affordable housing service providers is they would like more integration with cities and, and counties. And so that there's more of a feedback loop. And so if there's a way to share data, uh, between the service providers and the council, that would be great.
Feedback loop is the perfect explanation of what should happen. Thanks.
Thank you, and so last one.
Also good, similar, I don't know that it needs a feedback loop, but yeah, just a nice layer to help all.
I think it was a good idea to move that up to a medium priority from low for sure, in terms of Spanish, no question.
Yeah, I agree, I did need to make that a medium.
Yeah, I noted that when we initially did our, our, um, housing survey, we had a significant under, uh, participation from Hispanic people, which likely because we were delayed in getting the survey out in Spanish. So I, I, I think that that's mirrored here and that we, um, if we want people to get access to services and be aware of what's going on, I think this is a really, really vital part of that.
Okay, I don't know if it's serendipitous, it was exactly midnight, uh, so congratulations.
I don't know if that was intentional or not, but, uh, that is effectively it. So our job, uh, staff, we're taking this report to the coun- to council next week, we'll summarize your comments, provide them to council. And again, between, after the council meeting, we'll go out, do additional research on some of these areas, bring them back with additional stakeholder for a final refinement of the policies and programs. I think that's our last slide, if I'm correct. And thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, uh, everybody and especially to the staff, um, not, not only for staying late, but all the work that's gone into producing all these documents and all the different plans. Uh, especially giving you, your staffing, staffing challenges. So, so there've been some great reports and thank you so much for standing there for, must be a couple of hours now. So, uh, well done, guys, we, we got through it. And at this point, I'll adjourn the meeting until the next regular planning commission meeting on the April twenty-six, uh, twenty twenty-two. Thank you and good morning. Thank you.